I do, thanks you. All right, good evening, everyone, welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. Uh, this meeting format, this meeting will be a remote video teleconference sitting pursuant to one MRSA subsection 403-k. The public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099, ID 8477375, 5145 and password 589601, or via computer at information provided online. Uh, members of the public may also submit comments via email to info@sanfordmain.org. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
To the republic.
Which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty, justice for all.
Um, what can I say about myself? Uh, I spent twenty-two years and I'm.
Please, if you can mute your microphone, that would be wonderful, thank you. Okay, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call, Council Hanselman.
President.
Council Stackpole. He may be joining along. If, if, if someone sees him join, just give him a heads up, let me know. Council Tuttle.
Present, Mr. Mayor.
Council Lanigan.
Present.
Council Hurley.
Present.
Attorney Mayor Hanslip. Gosh, I thought that was his voice in Pledge of Allegiance, okay. Um, they may be joining along. Hi, my name is Tom Cody, Sanford, welcome. Uh, joining me tonight is City Manager Steve Buck and his executive assistant, Mr. Larissa Ricketts. Uh, we have two minutes to approve this evening, nineteen-nine-two-seven-zero-one. We'll do this together. Order to approve the minutes from the city council meeting held on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty, and nineteen-nine-two-eight-zero-one. Order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Do we have a motion?
No moves.
No move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the minutes? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole, have you joined us? Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan? Council Hurley? Attorney Mayor Hanslip, have you joined us? Yes, carries five to zero. Okay, uh, city, uh, let's see, mayor's report this evening. I just had one little tidbit. If I can find it, let's see here. Larissa forwarded an email or some information. That I thought everyone found useful. Uh, let's see. It is that the very nice people, uh, from Pine Hollow, Little Free Golf Court in South Sanford, Mr. Mark LaHora, LaHora, LaRoo?
LaRoo.
LaRoo.
Or, excuse me. Trying to pronounce that on the fly here. So, Mark, thank you for your generosity. Uh, my management is going to offer free golf this weekend, uh, for first responders and healthcare workers who show their ID. So, this weekend, June sixth and seventh, free golf for the, uh, the healthcare workers, uh, who show their ID. So, thank you for that generous offer. Um, I, I have, uh, to switch topics, I've got a few people who have reached out regarding, um, you know, the, the news of late, uh, in regards to, you know, the, the, the issues going on nationally. Uh, so, you know, I, I've got some emails to return, some phone calls to return. So, if you're chiming in now and you're looking, uh, I haven't forgotten you, I'm just gonna get back to, um, you know, the long list of folks that are looking for conversations in regards to, you know, race relations and things of that nature. So, um, I'll get to those as soon as I can. Any subcommittee reports this evening?
No.
Okay. See none, we'll turn it over to the city manager.
Hey, just a little moment to, uh, swap the screens out. Okay, so this is the manager's report for June second. Uh, the first item is testing on community health. I thought this was quite interesting. Uh, received, uh, information from the Sanford Sewage District, Andre Broso, uh, the, uh, that influent within the system was tested for the presence of COVID-19. Company by the name of Biobot Analytics selected seven communities in Maine, which was Sanford, Bangor, Bath, Augusta, Lewiston, Auburn, Portland, and York, to test for the presence of COVID-19 in the influent, uh, in other words, in our sewage flow. Uh, three rounds of sampling were performed here in Sanford. The first round test came back, uh, and were deemed non-detectable. Uh, that doesn't mean there wasn't any there at all. It simply means that our population has less than a five percent infection rate pursuant to the, uh, company. So, I'll let you know with the next two test results. Uh, I was not aware of when the earliest test date was taken, but the last test date was taken on May twenty-seventh. So, it'll be interesting to see what the results are through the continuum of the testing. Uh, the next element is funding for local government under the CARES Act. So, to date, there's been no specific funding under the federal CARES Act, uh, as it pertains to municipal operations, even under the Families First Corona Response Act, uh, the FFCRA that granted, uh, two weeks paid leave vacation, two weeks paid sick time for qualifying individuals, as well as up to ten additional weeks of, uh, FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act, uh, under the, the particular act. For those employees that went out, uh, uh, within the municipality, there is no reimbursement currently for that. They're out for private businesses, but not for municipal operations. This particular bill that I'm referencing now is a, is a bill that was, um, was, um, has been sponsored by Robert Menendez, uh, Senator Bill Cassidy, Senator Cindy Hyde Smith, Senator Joe, uh, Manchin, Senator Susan Collins, and Senator Cory Booker. And I know from a phone conversation that we had last Friday that, um, Senator King has signed on to this bill as well and needs support. Under this federal legislation called the SMART Act introduced by, uh, the senators as referenced, uh, there is five hundred billion of new funding to address state and local impacts stemming from the coronavirus for both directing current expenses as well as revenues lost. Uh, so there's three tranches in here. Uh, the first tranche looks at the population, the state's population, uh, as a part of the whole. There's a hundred and sixty billion that's put into that. Um, and then the second tranche of a hundred and sixty billion goes to the states based on the state's infections rate. Uh, so both tranche number one and number two are going to be relatively small for Maine because our infection rate was low and our population is low in comparison to the rest of the population. Uh, the third fund, uh, the third tran- uh, tranche is, uh, lost revenue, is a hundred and sixty billion going in there. It's used for lost revenue. The state will receive a relative portion of a hundred and sixty billion based upon a formula. Uh, so I won't read into all of that. Uh, as far as Maine is concerned, we're guaranteed to see, uh, not less than two billion out of this. And that is to be distributed, uh, pursuant to these formulations directly to municipalities and counties. Uh, it's a direct pass-through once received, uh, if it's approved. And once received, the state has just fifteen days to pass that through and can file for not more than a fifteen-day extension period to put that through. Uh, the funding, if passed, uh, can be, uh, used to cover necessary expenditures due to the COVID-19, including expenditures necessary to meet, uh, the non-federal share contribution requirement of any public assistance as provided under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. Non accounted for in the most recent budget, um, uh, and elements were incurred during the period from March first, you know, going into all of that. Uh, but it can also get into lost revenues and or delayed revenues pursuant to the economic shutdown. The only thing the funding cannot be used for is to prop up pension funds if they're so underfunded. Uh, so if that should pass, municipalities and counties here in Maine would see a significant positive impact as far as the federal distribution towards offsetting the economic impacts that we're currently experiencing. So, so still in a hold, uh, pattern on this. Uh, as we know, uh, we have also advocated for, uh, the governor to look at the one point two-five billion that, that, uh, her administration already has, that a portion of that be proportioned to municipalities similar to what other states have done, allocating up to fifty-five dollars per capita. If that was the case for Sanford, we would see about one point one million dollars out of that, uh, current one point two-five billion. So, um, the word is still out on that. Last Friday, participated in a, uh, teleconference with a, with the governor in which she indicated her was, it was, it is her intent to work with the legislature to ensure that both revenue sharing and EPS hold municipalities whole. I'm, I'm not yet clear as to that, if, if that would mean no amendment to the formulas for both, uh, and/or does that mean no amendment to the formulas of both? Uh, and that the funding pool of money such as revenue sharing, which is, it was anticipated pursuant to the budget to have a hundred and forty million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars put into that, that that amount of money would be secured as well. So, still waiting for further clarification on that. Uh, the next element, uh, is the Sanford Airport Solar Project. The project continues to be on schedule and has made significant progress. The array, um, is scheduled to go online for generation this fall. It will be the largest array in Maine at the time on and in, the largest array on an airport at that point in time. Uh, the Sanford High School SRTC, as WSSRTV produced, uh, the video that I have a link attached here. And what I'd like to do, it's about a seven-minute video. I won't, uh, go through the whole thing. But what I'd like to do is ask Allison Rogers, who's on the, uh, our airport director, who's on the, the Zoom conference with us tonight. I'd like to start the video up, uh, and then show you, uh, portions of that and have her describe that to you. So, just give me a moment to share a different screen. Okay, so Allison, are you live with us now?
I am.
Okay, start the video. Has everybody seen the video at this point? So, there's, there's no sound to the, to the video. Okay, Allison?
This is a, this is a presentation of the latest update on construction of the Sanford Airport Solar at our Sanford Seco's Regional Airport. What you're looking at right there, when it was zoomed in, the white piece of equipment, that's one of the inverters. One of the most recent developments is that all of the inverters were installed on the project. Those inverters take the direct DC current that comes off the solar panels themselves, and it turns it into AC current that's able to be delivered into the grid and sold and used as electricity. What you're looking at here is the infield. This is the area, it's a polygon of land that's in between two taxiways and two of our runways. Typically, this type of property on an airport in the, the infield is unusable. Um, it just sits there, it's kind of dead land. So, for us to be able to use it and especially utilize it for revenue producing is very, very good. It's one of the unique parts of this project, just because of the, the height restrictions in there. And then also due to the lack of, um, access, because you have to cross an active taxiway or a runway. So, this is really neat that we're able to do that. So, you can see the fencing, that fencing goes around for electrical code that separates everybody in the airport from the high voltage area that's gonna be inside once the panels are installed there. This is one of the storage areas. It's showing you a palletized solar panels. So, they're stacked too high and three deep, you can see here. And this is less than twenty-five percent of all the panels for the project. So, it, it kind of gives you a feeling of just the scope of this, how big it is. So, the total project is over a hundred and fifty thousand panels. Coming up here is the laydown area. So, this is the temporary lease that we did to allow Nextera and the general contractor, Wanzek, to store all of their materials in a secure way. And then you can also see their construction trailers. So, they have, they're currently leasing about eleven acres from us for just the storage and laydown. So, this fluctuates with materials based on what phase of the project they're in. And that, the metal that you see laid out there, that's the racking. So, those are the elements that provide the framework that sit on the pilings that you'll see in a moment. And those pilings, um, are what holds up the panels themselves. This is what we call the big lot, south of runway seven-two-five. So, this is the largest chunk of property. And you can see on the right-hand side of the video, it looks a little bit more metallic. And that's because that area, the phase of the project that we're in right now, is assembling all of that racking. So, you have the, the piling that sticks out of the ground, and then you have a vertical piece of racking, and you have horizontal racking. And that sets up the framework that the panels sit on. So, in each one of those rows, all of the solar panels are, are lined up, and they're in portrait, so longways stacked too high. So, there'll be two, two panels tall along every single one of those rows. You can see that the project is all fenced in. There's over eleven thousand linear feet of fencing. You've got a couple miles of fence that were part of this project. And again, you can see some of the construction vehicles, and you can see those inverters that are all set. So, a couple weeks ago, they brought in a crane, and the crane was used to set those inverters on top of special screw pilings that go into the ground to hold those. The roadways are all constructed. You can see the access roads. So, now we're flipped back around, heading north, and you can see another stockpile of the palletized panels.
I'm gonna fast forward just a, a little bit, Allison.
Yep. All of the collector lines that run off from the panels themselves are underground, and those go along the access roads chiefly. And then to prevent, of course, because on the airport, you can't have any obstructions that stick out. So, they were all horizontally drilled underneath the ground. There was a boring done underneath the runway and then underneath the taxiway as well. So, that was one of the interesting components of the project. The one that was the longest, I believe, was fourteen hundred feet that they drilled. They also did a horizontal drilling underneath the Moussum River for the interconnect. And I believe that one was twenty-seven feet deep, that boring. This that you're seeing here is up on the end of Cyro Drive, this is the substation lot. So, to the left is where they did the boring underneath the Moussum. And to the right, you can see where they have all the decking laid down, and that's where it connects to the three-phase power. So, all the large transformers will be here, and that will step up the power to three-phase from the project and interconnect to the grid so that it can be sold. So, they've made excellent progress, um, on the substation so far. So, Nextera is building and constructing the substation itself, and the contractor on that is Chinbro. And then they're gonna, um, transfer ownership of that to CMP, and CMP will run the substation. So, we're making good progress. As far as I'm told, everything's on schedule for that go-live date of November first.
It's incredible, so.
It is. Try to get a little bit of a feeling for the scope of it when you see it from above with the footage like that to just really feel how large the project is.
Agreed, and, and you released this to the city council earlier this, this week, and I, you know, I, I saw it and I was just blown away by, really, what captured my attention was the long line of solar panels that seemed to stretch forever. Um, when you say that's twenty percent of the panels going up, that's just really hard to fathom, to be honest. That's, that's amazing. Um, so thank you for all those folks that are involved with that project. And it doesn't seem that long ago when we were out there in the cold runway, um, launching this thing, riding in the same initial post. So, that was, uh, I don't know when that was exactly, but gosh, it, it's made a ton of progress since then.
It was cold, Mr. Mayor.
It was cold, it was cold and windy. And, and, you know, do you remember when that was, Allison?
It was November.
Yeah, so, gosh, it's amazing in six months or so, what, what's, what's occurred out there. So, thank you for your efforts and, uh, to all those involved.
Mr. Mayor, Council Tuttle, I'd like to say something.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I typically deserve to give Allison a lot of credit for where this, uh, project has gone forward. I've been involved working on the airport for probably the last forty years, and I really, I think that the last few years are really, uh, between Stephen and Alan. And our council, it really was a step forward for our airport and the people of Sanford Springville.
Excellent, thank you. You, you can't see it, Allison, but we're giving you a standing ovation.
Thank you. It's not done yet. We'll, uh, we'll save it for when, when we flip the switch and go live.
That's, that's gonna be incredible, so thank you for that. Okay, city manager Buck?
Okay, on to, uh, streets and roads. Uh, Public Works has been working diligently with reduced numbers of, uh, on the preparations for this year's aggressive paving program. Projects completed to date are Hanson's Bridge Road, Witcher's Mills Road, Stebbins Road. Uh, projects in, currently in progress, uh, to name a few are Tombley Road, New Dam Road, Blanchard Road, and Stockapi Road. Uh, Main Street from Emery to Lebanon Street is scheduled to start June eighth, twenty-twenty, uh, weather permitting. So, that will be that portion of Main Street that's in the worst shape. It is a maintenance overlay only. It's there to preserve, uh, the roadway until such time as the downtown planning partnership initiative, uh, wraps up, and we move forward for funding under, uh, MDOT, or they should say twenty-twenty-four, not, uh, whatever it does say. Uh, but in the year twenty-twenty-four, so we knew that we couldn't wait another, uh, four-plus years uh, in order for that stretch of street to be, to be addressed. Uh, questions were also raised as far as, uh, maintenance. So, even though there's an aggressive road paving pro- uh, program out there this summer, and I didn't provide the full list of all of the roads that are gonna be accomplished this year. Uh, questions have been raised as far as what about maintenance on the other roads that are not either being reconstructed this year or having a maintenance overlay done. So, the, the lump sum is, there's eight hundred and ten thousand dollars in maintenance, uh, to be addressing those other road bases that are not going under reconstruction this year. Uh, it didn't put the dollar amount for each one of these categories out there, you know, we have that. Uh, but I'm holding up this, at this point in time because all of these major aspects are going out to bid. We'd like to get as, uh, competitive a price on this as possible. Oop, are we still live?
I see you perfectly.
Yeah, no, we lost power here for a minute. The lights went out, but.
Oh, okay.
Well, they're back on, so, all right, uh, crack sealing, so we have an aggressive crack sealing program out there. Uh, the street painting that's already in progress right now, and of course, all the roads that get repaved this year, they'll come back and redo all of those, uh, markings as necessary. Uh, pothole repairs is a very aggressive amount of money that's gonna be, that's being put into that and, and under some contracted services. Range repairs, ditching, street signs, sidewalks and crosswalks, tree clearing, uh, landscaping, and finally, the phase two of the Good Old Brook Agreement to address the water quality there. Um, there is a pending governor's executive order. I didn't feel bad about putting that out to the council last night and or, or talking about it here today. It has not been announced yet, but it's, I'm getting this from so many sources that it might as well be out there and be public. It's just that the governor's office has been asking for more input on it. Um, what the order that's pending out there now seeks to make amendments to the fourteen-day quarantining and or the tourism aspect of getting Maine's economy reopened. Uh, this stems from, I believe, a lot of the advocacy work that's been done by the, uh, the managers group, both York and Cumberland County groups, as well as the mayor's coalition. We had communication last week with the governor's office again, and Governor Mills participated directly in a phone conference, um, with the, uh, group of, uh, Maine beaches, um, communities for which Sanford has always been invited to, so it's appreciative of that. We had, uh, DECD Commissioner Heather Johnson in there, and Maine Municipal, uh, Maine Municipal Association's leadership was in that phone conference as well. Uh, stemming from that, uh, one of the elements that was discussed was to engage the private sector as well as the, uh, don't rely just upon, uh, the state and or municipalities, but to engage the private sector uh, as being an active part of the reopening program and as part of the monitoring and testing mechanisms. Uh, to date, I've not seen the strength of, of that, uh, request yet. But she did, uh, significantly is proposing to strengthen the municipal, uh, municipality's ability to, uh, better participate in this, uh, through, uh, the four elements that are outlined here, public education. We know that we've, we've done four already and, uh, and are poised to do more if need be. Uh, physical distancing, uh, we have to continue to modify ordinances and, and make allowances such as we've done for, uh, outdoor seating already. And I have another, uh, element from the action item in there to extend, uh, uh, on-premise, uh, alcohol licensing in a more expedient manner. Uh, random system, uh, symptom checks. We could allocate, uh, staffing within the code enforcement department and apply for funding to do so, to go out and aid in spot checking and work with the businesses on their spot checking program. Uh, and then the last is education and compliance checks, uh, that I would envision the utilization again of the land bank code officers to assist with that, uh, as well. So, if the governor does come out with this, this type of, of an order, which we anticipate, uh, before Friday of this week, I'll come back to the city council, um, and ask for, uh, permission to, authorization to work on, uh, a plan such as is outlined here for our municipality and apply for the, for said funding. Also, a bit of good news, uh, general administration applied through, uh, the United Way of York County for eleven thousand dollars of funding under the CARES Act. Uh, we just got an announcement that the United Way of York County was awarded ninety-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars, of which they have allocated ten thousand of that to go back towards our general assistance program. So, uh, just a thousand dollars shy of what we had asked for. Very appreciative of that. And as we all know, Director Randy White, uh, will make exceptionally good use of that as far as, uh, individuals qualify, so qualifying. And then the last element is a, is a bit of a disappointment to, to myself and probably to everybody, uh, that I titled this to protest and rioting. Uh, protests centered on the recent death of George Floyd are taking place in Maine, as they are all across the country. Right to protest is, each is protected under the US Constitution and the First Amendment. Issues have been with rioting, uh, property destruction and, and personal injuries that have been caused by a minority of protesters under the pretense of George Floyd's death. So, that minority is viewed to not be representative of George Floyd's death, but are taking actions outside of that. Uh, the cities of Bangor and Portland have been most impacted to date. Uh, protests and riots in Portland on the night of June first, uh, saw a crowd of over thirty-five hundred people resulting in a multiple arrests, multiple properties damaged. The non-local influence of this turn of events has been well documented and is cautioned. I was in a phone conference today with John Jennings, the, the city manager in Portland. We're talking about the regional response around all of these, uh, activities and the continued support of municipalities across our boundaries to address this. Uh, the city of Sanford's public safety personnel is actively engaged in dialogues and planning. Focus of the dialogues and planning is preserve the First Amendment rights to free speech and to ensure that the protester's message is delivered and received in a peaceful and law-abiding manner. Planning is also focused on events observed over the past week to address associated rioting assumed to not be part of the protesters delivering messaging around the untimely death of George Floyd. City's primary focus continues to be on dialogue and preservations of the right to peaceful assembly and exercise free speech through protest. Actions beyond those rights and violation of laws protecting life, liberty, and property will be dealt with with a legal exercise of authority to protect the rights of all people. So, I'll leave it at that point, but the city is doing a significant amount of planning around the ac- the actions that we're seeing as of late.
Hey, does that complete? Yeah, council? Quiet crew, there was a lot there. Thank you, Steve, appreciate it. Um, if something comes up, but there, you know, uh, the roads, I'll, I'll say this, the roads are looking significantly better. Um, I, I think there's a lot of people who are anxious for the main street portion to get done. Um, that'll be a nice change, and that, you know, that strip obviously is looking very rough. Um, so that'll be an excellent addition to, uh, what's going on. But it's nice to see all the activity and, and having some of these roads already repaired. The, the, the speed of which some of this is getting done is actually very, very impressive. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
I, I, sorry, I just had one question for the city manager. Um, I, I asked it previously at another meeting. Um, the, the warranty work on that section of Main Street that we had done, um, i- is there been any update on that? Are we having any luck getting that repaid?
Um, sorry, Council Lanigan, I, I don't have an update for you on that tonight. I know the warranty issue is, is continuing to be pressed.
Okay, and then just the, uh, the traffic light also on Main Street and two oh two. Um, I know that we were looking to see if we could find the funding for that, and I just didn't know if, uh, we made any progress on that. That's starting to really back up now with the, uh, the out-of-state traffic coming into town.
Yeah, we're still, we're still working with the Maine Department of Transportation, so they're, they're going to redo all of that, uh, signalization. Um, and we, we're still requesting that they, uh, consider doing that, that light earlier than later because it's about a twenty thousand dollar. because it's about a $20,000 plus fix for us simply to replace the camera system. Well, it's not so much the camera system, it's the antiquated control unit that goes with that camera system, which is, geez, something less than five years old, that you can't get parts for anymore. So we hate to expend $20,000 worth of resources only to have it taken out a few years from now. So still working with the Maine Department of Transportation. If we exhaust all avenues there, well, then we'll be forced to replace the controller.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions this evening? Any questions from anybody? I know there's some people online today that aren't normally online. Any questions from anyone?
Tom?
Yeah.
Ann and I both got kicked out due to power, like a power blip.
Okay.
During Steve's report, so he typically emails it before the council meeting, but he didn't. So I just like an emailed copy so we can read the bits we missed.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, seeing nothing further, we will move on with the agenda. Tonight, we have a few presentations somewhat related. Communications Presentations 19-917.01. A quarterly report and presentation from the Director of the Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council, Mr. Executive Director Jim Nyman. You with us, Jim?
I am, can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Excellent, thank you, Arista, for connecting me. My name is Jim Nyman, I'm the Director of the Economic Growth Council, Mayor Cody. I'm not certain if Deputy Mayor Hanflips is back, but greetings if he is, and members of the city council. I want to start by hoping that you and your families are well. That's sort of like the key thing on our minds right now, health and safety. And then to thank you for the opportunity to update you on the Growth Council activities. We have a few quarterly report topics, and then we'll segue into our marketing effort. So the opening for me is where everyone starts, I guess, these days, COVID-19. For those that don't know, we have been open and working each day. We reopen to the public on May 18th. We've also been acting as a clearinghouse, mostly during the March-April period, when there was just such a flurry of information at that point. But a clearinghouse for COVID-19 business info across federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We got a ton of information, we sifted through as much as we could. We got that information back out in the form of email blasts, newsletters, Facebooks, and our website. So again, we tried to keep information flowing, so our companies knew what they had access to, as well as, you know, some of the PSAs that we did to make sure that our community was up on some of the issues around health and safety as well. The next item is Portsmouth Naval Shipyard Statistics. We looked at calendar 2019. Again, if you remember this routine that we go through, we get the raw data in February, March, from the CCO's Shipyard Association. And Mike Ralston has been a longtime member of the IDC, the Growth Council, as well as this Shipyard Association. We then convert that raw data into infographics, you can see those on the screen. I think the key items that I bring to your attention, number one, is just the significance of the shipyard, the economic impact in 2019, $1.2 billion with a B. I know we've been throwing around big numbers lately, billions and trillions, but that's a, that's a huge economic number for our region. Why does that matter? Those numbers are up 54% since 2017. Of the civilian employees at the shipyard, over 7,300. 523 of those employees are from Sanford-Springvale, making it the largest number of employees from a community in Maine, New Hampshire, or Massachusetts. And those 523 individuals were paid $37.7 million in 2019. So again, it's just to bring to your attention, I know it's sort of below radar sometimes, but it is important. I hope that we don't have to sort of, you know, band together when things get tough, but if we do, we are on the same page in terms of the numbers and the impact. The, thank you, Steve. The next item is the SNPDC, which is Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission, and A, which is the Southern Maine Finance Agency. Those two groups that I'm on their board, they have been getting actively involved in the CARES Act. SNPDC is looking at an EVA award of up to $1.29 million to create a new revolving loan fund for pandemic-related business. It'll be first come, first served, I've certainly made my pitch already for Sanford businesses. Today, though, there is no money in the coffers yet, there are no applications yet, and there is no federal guidance yet. But we do expect to have money on the streets of the program by early July.
Go way down.
The second, the second thing of note is that there is, right now, $100,000 of regular revolving loan fund available within the SNPDC. And the reason that the finance agency is linked there as well, because they do the underwriting for those loans, and so we're involved with both of those groups. And one other thing to note around new monies from the CARES Act, the DECD is looking at the CDVG program to create a forgivable microloan program of up to $5,000 for LMI-eligible businesses. Those of us that have, that have gone through these programs in the past know that there's a little bit of red tape that goes with that. But again, that program is coming off the drawing board, and I will make sure the word is out there, you know, when we have access to these revolving loan funds. The next topic is Sanford Net Fiber. I wanted to share the news tonight that, you may recall that Steve Buck and I, this seems like 100 years ago, but it was January 13th that we met with DECD Commissioner Heather Johnson, first staff, the ConnectMe Authority, as well as the CDVG staff. We had someone, Senator King's staff with us, as well as WI executives. And from that starting point, we basically caught them up on the progress we were making. We asked them for about $50,000 in state funds. Those of you that have heard Steve report out before know that we have not received any state funds for Sanford Net Fiber. So it was our pitch to get them involved. We wanted the money to hire an industry expert to perform a survey work, a take rate survey, so we can get a better understanding of the internet usage in Sanford, both residential and business, and how we might convince more customers to participate in their community broadband network. And so the good news tonight is that, last night, I got an official letter back from the ConnectMe Authority that said we'd been approved. We have been awarded the $25,000. We had also gotten in our hands in mid-February, CDVG's commitment to $25,000. So together, we have a $50,000 package to go out and secure a consultant to do that work for us. We have begun the draft with GWI of an RFP, it'd be a mini RFP. We've identified four or five companies that can do that work for us. When we spoke with them, it was pre-COVID. So we still need to sort through what that means in terms of, are you on the ground knocking on doors? Are you doing this primarily, you know, through the email or through the online method? So that stuff will be worked out. The good news tonight, though, is the state has stepped up. They have participated with us, made a commitment to get us to this next stage with our Sanford Net program. Next item is Summer Common. The developer for that site visited last week, reports that the $25 million project, which is a 64-bed skilled nursing care center, 30-bed assisted living facility specializing in memory care, that that project remains on schedule, on budget, despite COVID-19, with foundation work done and exterior walls going up. So you can see that, the pictures that Steve is showing, show that land and also the progress, both the site work, foundation work, and now the exterior walls are going up. They are still anticipating a March 2021 opening. There will be 90 full-time employees staffing that facility. And just to give you a heads up, the Growth Council has been approached for a tip for this project, and we are supporting that request, and we plan to get that company in front of you in executive session for a more detailed review. It looks now like it'll probably be July. But we are anxious to get nonprofit land and buildings into the private tax bank. And that's what the evolution from some of this hospital property to a private developer is, that's where that's taking us to. The next topic is One Eagle Drive. I think I've spoken a little bit about it in the past. I reported back in January that we had met with the broker and the developer and the fire marshal, and also codes. We spent some time on-site with the developers. We got some things fixed immediately around exit lights, and they are committed to sprinkling the entire building. The developers are from Scarborough, they have, their Forte is taking fallow and underutilized buildings, and they have moved quickly. They set up about 13,000 square feet of space for hussy seating, that they could warehouse and assemble products there, excuse me. They have a managed-to-own agreement with Maine Health, SMHC. Once a percentage of square footage is occupied. Principals have also met by Zoom with city manager, and later with site plan staff, who provided some valuable information to them regarding water location and road easements as they continue that redevelopment. The roof is going on when we met, new lighting, HVAC upgrades. Plans have been made with Unitil for multiple natural gas connections. The developers basically said to me they believe the building has great bones, and they're pleased to be able to modernize it. I'm working with Dunham Group, actively soliciting tenants. I've met on-site with several prospects. This effort is ongoing with Dunham and the Abits. We are, as I said before, anxious to get fallow, underperforming buildings back online in a much stronger taxpaying position with companies and jobs. Those that might not remember, that's almost 100,000 square feet of space. The next item is New England Battery Storage on Cyro Road. There was an option, this company has an option on the IDC lot there for the purpose of developing advanced battery energy storage systems that will supply wholesale electricity products to ice in New England. It's about a four to five million dollar project, it's on three and a half acres. I think there's three lots left now, that's one of those that's left on Cyro Road that's owned by the IDC. It's about a little over a five-megawatt capacity that will be initially planned. We began talking with developers back in March of 2019. I toured their 10-megawatt facility at the Jones Street Substation in Madison in June, so almost a year ago. We spoke last month for a status update, they have wrapped up easement matters, they have employing VHB, recently began permitting process work, civil engineering and some geotechnical, and off to site plan and planning board. They've signed an interconnection agreement with CMP last month. They are finishing up due diligence. We expect they'll purchase the IDC property and use that option in the next month or so. Again, underlying anxious to get nonprofit land into taxpaying status. Two other quick things that we've talked about in the past. We used to call it York Pines, may have called it more recently Maine Sports Resort. The latest iteration is the Three Bears Resort. We have a lead developer onboard, there are a number of positive steps. Studying the land, city funded traffic study, money raised by the Growth Council and others to fund feasibility study and architectural rending, those are completed. We have an investor brochure that's being developed this month to attract project investors in 2020. The Growth Council stays in touch with DECD to keep them posted on progress. You may recall that pine tree zone benefits must be okayed at DECD by 12/31/21. So a year from December is the last time you can use pine tree zones under the law, as it's written today. And we are anxious to get undeveloped land into private taxpaying development. And the final thing, we've talked about very briefly, a technology park. We continue to work with the IDC to secure land for a future technology park. We want to have a place where we optimally utilize access to Sanford Net Fiber. We have a parcel, we have a landowner, we're in regular conversations. It is not a done deal, but I'm very optimistic that we're making good progress. And obviously, cannot report more until I have more information for you on that, but that's definitely out there on the horizon for us. And then finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about marketing before I introduce you to Jen Caneely. You may recall in early 2019, following your decision to replenish Growth Council marketing funds, we thank you for that vote of confidence and your forward thinking. You recall we selected Deets Associates to lead our campaign? They proposed, I'm looking back now, to develop a brand strategy for the city of Sanford to do two things, raise our profile and create positive energy. And they wanted to do that for two reasons, to encourage economic growth and pride in the community. When Tim Dees lost his battle with cancer last fall, his team had made progress on a number of fronts, the brand strategy, the website, videos, photographs, all at different stages under Tim's watchful eye and direction. He was passionate about our community. I think when Jen walked you through some of these, some of the material, you'll feel that. The videos and pictures that we've developed, some of which are starting to circulate on the city's webpage and others, the branding effort. His two daughters were born at Goodall Hospital, he lived and worked in our region for decades. He surveyed a number of businesses and restaurants and residents just a year ago to sample and get a sense of how people felt about the community. He was adamant that we return Springvale to our marketing campaign. He believed it was an asset that must be displayed. He felt strongly that the future be in our tagline because of the Herculean effort. The community had committed in time, money, and energy to build unprecedented schools, community broadband networks, and alternative energy facilities. We retained his enthusiasm for our work until the very end, when he passed in September and his company dissolved in December. We were obviously feeling devastated and a bit lost, actually. We finished that transition with the contractors, some of the Deets website video staff in early 2020. We then selected a new firm, Caneely and Company, and signed them up through this fiscal year. The Growth Council Board has authorized me to work with them over the next 12 months. I cannot overstate the difficulties the Growth Council has faced on what began in 2019 as a pretty straightforward project. You gave us the funding, we hired Tim Dees, my longtime assistant left. We had starts and stops in finding a replacement, we found her replacement. We logged Tim Dees, my new assistant, personal boss. We finally found Jen Caneely, COVID-19 struck. But, almost because we represent Sanford-Springvale, we have a plan to share tonight. I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly thank Growth Council Chair Christopher Signer, Growth Council Board Member and Mayor Tom Cody, who participated as marketing committee members all the way through this timeline that I just shared. They were the glue that connected our efforts to each monthly board meeting where our larger group could make progress. Thanks to you both, and thanks to the city council. We appreciate your ongoing support for this initiative. Let me now introduce Jen Caneely, who came highly recommended to us by Westbrook's Economic Development Director Daniel Stevenson. At least one of you on the city council, I recall, asked me to please call Daniel a couple of years back and determine how he was able to produce such great commercials and ads for his city. So we're pleased to have Jen Caneely working for us. She has stepped into an extremely difficult role of adapting and using some of the earlier work projects of another firm. But she's poised tonight to explain and highlight how we pulled our material and plans together. So with that, I will shift the spotlight to you, Jen.
Great, thank you, Jim. Can everyone hear me now?
You can.
Awesome, great, thank you, Jim. Good evening, Steve, Mayor Cody, council members and all. Thank you for your time this evening. What you are seeing in front of you is Sanford-Springvale, Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council, new logo. And we're excited to talk about all of the different things that we'll be promoting this year. A little bit about me, the company was started with my husband, John, who's a main resident, and a personal background in finance and marketing. In addition to working with Caneely and Company, he also teaches marketing at St. Joseph's College. I have my master's degree from Norwich University, MPI, and also have worked in the marketing and advertising field for over 25 years, and bring a wealth of knowledge on the creative and media buying side. So with those two together, we run Caneely and Company. I've also lived in Sanford for two years prior to moving to Bedford to live with John. So I'm very familiar with the area, and a couple of the things that brought me to the region originally were the schools, the recreational opportunities, and the location. As Jim had mentioned, I've worked with different municipalities on their marketing and advertising and some strategy sessions, and looking forward to working with Sanford-Springvale. The next piece is a video showcasing some of the love of Sanford, so let's take a look at that, and then we'll continue. So let's take a look at that and then we'll continue on.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I was just told there was no sound to that.
Yeah, there was no sound, Steve.
I'm sorry. Let me go back to the setting I need to click on this, just a moment.
And I ask the council to be patient because it is narrated and it's quite nice to hear it with the... Is anybody else seeing it a little choppy as it flows?
Silence is golden, Mr. Mayor.
That's what I hear, counselor. I wouldn't know anything about that.
Okay, I'm gonna try it again.
What makes a community a home? If you think it's found in smiles that say, this is where you want to be. Neighborhoods that stretch to the horizon. Schools that inspire. Green spaces that invite adventure. Even an occasional leap of faith. Then you've found it. Sanford Springvale, Southern Maine's best kept secret. Here you can write your own lyrics and celebrate the pure joy of finding a home. Some secrets are worth sharing. Find us at SanfordGrowth.com.
Much better.
Yeah, the video is absolutely beautiful. If you get the chance to go back and watch it live where it's timed out a little better, it came out beautiful. So there's a lot to work with in Sanford Springvale. If you can go to the next slide, please. So as Jim had mentioned, the branding campaign had started with Deets and Associates. And with all the research that he performed, there were four features that came up while doing the research for the new branding. They were community, the business or downtown, parks and recreation and rural. Steve, if I could have you go to the PDF of the logos, please?
There you go.
Perfect. So this is what the team had come up with. The first one you'll see, we're kind of calling it either the downtown or business logo. And this pays tribute to the mills and the downtown with a river running right through your city. The next one is the community. So even though Sanford Springvale is Maine's seventh largest city, there's still a tight neck community feel to it. The next one is recreation. Again, Sanford has an incredible array of recreational possibilities, including the water access for boating, kayaking, swimming, the hiking and biking trails, cross-country skiing, golf, the baseball and all the parks. And then the last one is the rural. There's still beautiful areas for use such as McDougall Orchards, Levine Strawberry Farms, Charles Ridge Farm. So again, all of these different features really make up Sanford Springvale and it's going to be great to continue featuring these as we continue the branding and the marketing and advertising.
Don't forget the airport.
Yes, yes. And so with those logos, we've branded and have included business cards, letterhead, the new website which we're developing right now, here's the snapshot of it. And this will all be carried out through with consistent branding and messaging.
Did you want me to show the website quickly or?
Yes, please. Yeah, if you could click that just to give them a snapshot of the homepage, that would be great.
Just to be clear, this is the Growth Council homepage, correct?
You should see that now.
So again, we have the new colors, smaller video playing up in the top right, consistent, easy phone number to reach, which this is all going to be responsive website. So whichever device you have, whether it's a mobile device or laptop or desktop, it will all fit the screen appropriately with beautiful imagery scrolling across. This is going a little slow, but when the website goes live, we have a lot of beautiful photography that we've been able to use and incorporate here. If you want to scroll down just a little bit, it'll show you a little more. And here we can update the community and our audience on new infrastructure and things that are happening in Sanford. So those will be all changeable. And going further down, we'll be using our social media a lot more as well as getting people to inquire about information on Sanford Springvale. Hopefully you're seeing a nice, beautiful, new branding campaign to launch and talk more about Sanford Springvale.
Okay, back to the PowerPoint? Okay.
So as you've mentioned tonight, there's been a lot of improvements in Sanford Springvale that you've all been working very hard on. And now it's time to kind of toot your own horn, so to speak. So with that, we're going to create campaigns talking about all of the different features. So the Sanford Net Fiber, the solar panel project, the infrastructure, educational assets, the community access and business and workforce recruitment. The marketing and advertising, again, as Jim had mentioned, is first starting right directly with Sanford and Springvale to get some buy-in from our local community and take pride in it and then work our way out. And the tools we're going to use include a lot of new video production, which is great use of storytelling. You see the visual and hear the story, the updated website, and we'll keep that updated and fresh. We're increasing our email database and social media campaign. We're going to use a little bit of print and direct mail. The print will be to go directly towards Sanford businesses that can use the Sanford Net Fiber with a follow-up call with our partner, GWI. Main Biz, that's one of the leading magazines in Maine to reach, again, business owners, lawyers, bankers, professionals, entrepreneurs. And again, with the different photography and messaging we have, there's another outlet to reach the audience that we want to bring to Sanford. And then television and streaming, and that's again, one way to push the video production out through the traditional television as well as streaming. So again, all of the different avenues will take using those tools. The next step, as Jim had mentioned, we are looking at a one-year agreement. And here's the financial breakdown of how we're allocating the different funds to go And then the last slide is implementation. So the implementation will begin with Jim, the mayor and city administrator. And we believe we can make most of the changes in June with a full launch in July and continuing forward with the messaging. Thank you so much for your time. I'm looking forward to working with the team in Sanford Springvale and open it up if you have any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Jennifer. We appreciate the transition and all the work that's occurred. You know, you were put into a unique position to pick up what Tim Deets and his team developed and then for your team to take it from there and implement it. It's not an easy task. So we appreciate all the flexibility and coordination you've provided us. So thank you for that. And Executive Director Nyman, thank you for pushing through and getting us through sort of a difficult time with the passing of Mr. Deets and getting us to this point. So, you know, I just want to add that myself and Chris Signore from the Economic Growth Council have sat in, like as Jim said, on many meetings, particularly at the beginning, just to kind of hash through these things. I can assure you that, you know, this was developed after a very lengthy sort of research process where Tim Deets and his associates would actually meet with members of the community, talk to them, what do you like, what are your challenges, what are the things that stand out to you about Sanford Springvale? And, you know, after a great deal of research, he came out with this tagline. It was really interesting where, you know, he thought it was really important to have the future in the tagline, based on all the things we had going on, but also just to bring it home that, you know, the people living here now, it is a forward-looking place. And so, you know, this was a long time in the making. Obviously, it would have been rolled out much sooner had this transpired as normal, but it didn't. So there's amazing images, the images you're looking at here, there's a lot more where this came from, they're beautiful. And it's going to allow us to put Sanford in a very positive light. So it's exciting. There's a couple of the downtown that are just really amazing, actually. So just wanted to add that, my two cents. Are there questions from the city council at this point about this marketing effort and where we go from here?
No.
Okay. Anything in relation to what Mr. Nyman rolled out earlier from his report?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, I just wanted to thank Mr. Nyman for including some information on the CARES Act funding that might come through the, possibly to small businesses in Sanford. And I guess my question, if he has the answer to share with us or can bring it back to us later, is how small businesses might be on the lookout for potential either revolving loan funds or the micro lines of credit the CBIDG will have. What's the best way for small businesses to keep their eye out for those being available?
Am I live? I'm not controlling my own voice here, so are people hearing?
They're live.
Yes.
Am, okay. You know, I think the, I think unfortunately, the smaller guys don't have the people out there, you know, chasing the Pierce Outwards weekly reports and that sort of thing. And so, you know, partly we try to, we try to make information available through some of our outlets. I think with Jen, we will have more outlets and more ways to do that. So some of it, some of it comes through us. The other thing, you know, we keep, we keep recommending that people touch base with the Small Business Development Center. Anne Lancaster is our person that represents, you know, the Sanford region. And some of these programs that I mentioned will actually have a component that says, you know, run this thing through the SBDC Council as you're applying for this money. So I'm, you know, I've, I've been pretty impressed, Anne, with some of your work in terms of, you know, collecting up information on all the restaurants, for example. And we'd certainly be open to any outlets that you think we should be pushing information. But that's, that's, you know, part of the way, we just, we try to transfer what we know out to the folks that can use it.
Great, thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Yes, just as, as you guys are getting, you know, developing the rest of the lots in the, in the industrial park there, has there any been any talks of a small business like park idea, like they have in Elliott, almost like incubator spaces where, you know, it's twelve hundred to fifteen hundred square foot, it's good for contractors. It seems like Elliott, you can't, you can't find an empty space and they're very popular for small businesses. And I just don't find that really available here in Sanford, like the business park type of setup. I just didn't know if there was any, if you guys were looking at anything like that.
I have not to date, but I'm certainly intrigued, especially if we... I'm kind of intrigued by a technology park that may, maybe has a place for individuals that aren't coming with companies, but they're coming, you know, as talented, folks that access, you know, e-commerce. And so I think it's an idea that we shouldn't lose. It may, you know, last time, honestly, I think I heard it, Council Lanigan was with the synergized Sanford effort, we had talked about it a little bit. But again, I've not heard much and not thought much.
I, I think, I think that we're missing, if you could drive down at some point in your life or Google it, down on two thirty-six on the, on the left-hand side, right before you get into kind of the heart of Elliott there, you'll notice that there's these, they're like contractor spaces and stuff. It's just steel buildings, it's pretty simple stuff. It's not really, I use the word incubator, but it's not, it's not the same thing that you're thinking. But I just didn't know. I, I know that there's some desire in the city for some space like that, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, thank you very much for the report this evening. We appreciate the details and look forward to the next update and the marketing presentation as it rolls out. Okay, public participation, anyone here to speak for public participation this evening? You can just speak up, there's a lot of people, so finding raised hands is always difficult. And I'm going to call a few of you out. So there's some folks here from the school system, and I did peruse the agenda. I just want to make sure that if, if you've, if there's a topic you're here to discuss and I'm not seeing it, or if I blow past it, just please interrupt me and just let me know that you're, you're here to speak on a particular item. If you're not here for a particular item and do want to speak, this would be the time. All right, we're going to move forward, I guess. Let's see, so next up, public hearings, the city council will hear comments on the following, nineteen-nine-zero-three-zero-one, a public hearing to receive comments on the new, excuse me, on the renewal of the city special amusement permit and application for liquor license renewal with malt, spiritus and vinous privileges from Ambet's Post Number Three, one sixty-nine, Lower School Street, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda, any concerns related to the consent agenda?
None.
Seeing none, we'll declare the consent agenda approved. All business, none. New business, first up, nineteen-nine-one-five-zero-one, proclamation honoring Anne Tuttle on the occasion of her retirement from the City of Sanford after nearly forty-five years of service. Throw the motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor. I would be remiss if I didn't do that.
I'll second that.
All right, and I have a proclamation honoring Anne Tuttle on this evening of June second, two thousand twenty, that I'd like to read. Whereas Anne Tuttle has worked for the City of Sanford for nearly forty-five years and whereas during this time she worked diligently to provide exemplary service, customer service in the office of the treasurer and tax collector. And whereas Anne has grown professionally, has adapted to all the challenges, both technological and logistical, in city hall throughout her years of employment. And whereas she has provided outstanding support as administrative assistant to the city treasurer, and whereas Anne will be retiring on June tenth, two thousand twenty. Now and therefore the city council of the City of Sanford, Maine, on behalf of the citizens of Sanford Springvale, does hereby extend our appreciation to Anne Tuttle and recognition of a job well done, with our best wishes for a happy retirement. Congratulations, Anne, we appreciate. Congratulations, Anne. We appreciate all you've done for us.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, my wife wanted to have a few words to say if it'd be appropriate.
Of course, we'd love that.
Yep.
It's not very long. I'm not long-winded like my husband.
That's okay. Thank you for that, yeah.
So I just want to say thank you for taking this time uh, to honor me. And I appreciate all the well wishes being sent my way. Uh, began working in the office as the youngest, and now I'm leaving as the oldest, working for the city of Sanford. And it was a good run, a good place to work, and once again, thank you for this honor.
Oh, you're very welcome. It's well deserved and, you know, we, we, we appreciate all the years of service. Forty-five years uh, goes by in a flash, I suppose, in some ways. In some ways, it probably felt long. So uh, we appreciate all you've done and uh, gotten us through this difficult time with the quote nineteen. Um, certainly we wish we had this meeting in person. Um, but, you know, second best option is to do it right here on Zoom and in the comfort of your own home with your husband. So thank you for all you've done and uh, best of luck with retirement.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Anne.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
You're welcome. All right, so we're, we're gonna put this one to bed. We'll do a quick, quick roll call. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole, did you join us? Council Tuttle?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's a good thing you voted yes on this one.
It is. That'd be in trouble.
You know it. Council Lanigan?
Of course, yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes, with a hearty congratulations.
Excellent. Deputy Mayor Hanslip, did you arrive at all? Okay, and I'm also a big fat yes, so thank you very much for your appreciation and everything you've done for us. Carrie's five is here. Okay, next up, nineteen dash nine one one dot zero one, order to receive city treasurer tax and property due non-payment of two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen real estate tax lien. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have uh, Paul Simpson with us this evening?
Yes, can you hear me?
We perfectly.
Okay, um, well, I'd like to also thank Anne Tuttle, my assistant, for helping me through this foreclosure year after year because it's a very tough time. Uh, this, I think this year was the worst. Um, we acquired twelve properties, of which nine were occupied. Uh, we were able to clear most of those out, but ultimately, at this point, I have three properties that I'm turning over to you. And I'd like to read them into the minutes. Ready? Okay, so I have uh, two seventeen Railroad Avenue in Springvale, identified as Tax Map R six, lot forty-one J. Um, thirteen Island Avenue in Sanford, that is Tax Map I twenty-nine, lot twenty-four. In twelve, Prue Court in Springvale, identified as Tax Map K seventeen, no, K fifteen, lot thirty-eight. Um, that is all I have at this point with regard to that. Um, there is one that is currently occupied. The person is trying very hard to come up with the money to pay everything. But at, at some point, I will come to you and ask permission. Hopefully in the near future, to sell it back.
And and I can tell everyone that's watching from home, and I know the council knows, that that Paul Simpson and her team do everything possible to to get these folks squared away.
Yes.
Probably more so than than anybody would ever imagine. Um, picks this personally and 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 really, you know, puts her heart on her sleeve and it really goes out there and tries to collect these funds and make sure that the people who are living in these properties are okay. So thank you for all you're doing, Paul.
Yeah.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council Tuttle, I'd like to say something too.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we need to congratulate Paula because a number of municipalities don't take the time and the effort to try to uh, make folk, folks in compliant in, in a very uh, hometown manner, and we're very lucky that we have Paula for a job well done.
No, thank you. Thank you, Council Tuttle.
Yeah, agree. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. I'm gonna do a roll. Any questions before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole? No, it's not with, it's Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, Carrie's five to zero. Thank you, Paul.
Yep, you're welcome.
Nineteen dash nine one zero dot zero one, order to set the date, due date for the twenty twenty real estate and personal property tax commitment as follows. First installment due by September fifteenth, two thousand twenty, second installment due by March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, with a delinquent interest rate of nine percent as determined by the state treasurer. Interest will begin to accrue in the first installment of September sixteenth, two thousand twenty, and the second installment on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay.
You want me to speak?
This one as well? Yep.
Yep, okay, so um, the municipal officials need to have a formal vote so we can set the due date and to inform the public as well. But this action also allows us to take any interest in cost and add it to the tax to become the principal when it goes to lien. So um, this is, should be done every year and uh, and and it also lets people know the upcoming due date, so. Uh, that is simply put.
Yep, excellent. And this is, this is our standard, you know, sort of yearly exercise. Um, the, the interest rate in, you know, is, is set by the state and these dates are what we'd normally do in any other circumstance. So there's nothing unusual happening here. Okay.
No change.
And, yep, any questions in the council? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole? I'm sorry, I'm gonna scratch his little name off my list here. Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley? Council Hurley?
Yes, yes, sorry. I was looking for the mute button. Sorry.
And I'm also a yes, Carrie's five to zero. Thank you for your patience this evening, Paula.
All right, oh, no problem. Thank you.
Nineteen dash nine twenty-three dot zero one, order to approve the release from aeronautical use grant uh, assurances of five point two five and zero point eight two acres, portions of Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport property, and update the Exhibit A property to reflect the release of the parcel. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. Okay, Allison?
Good evening, I'm Allison Avia, I'm the airport manager. Um, this item, we've been working on this for a couple of years now. The two different parcels both have to do with the industrial park that's adjacent to the airport. The first parcel is a triangular piece that is adjacent to Flemish Master Weavers. Um, so that, that's a larger piece of five and a quarter acres that you can see right there. So they've been using that for years to park, and you can see actually on this uh, depiction, the trailers that are parked on there. So as soon as we um, started having communication, we set up a temporary non-aeronautical land lease so that they're paying to use the property with the understanding that the eventual goal would be to uh, divide that parcel off of the airport property and sell it to them so that they could own it and then uh, maybe even expand their building yet again in that direction if they need to. Um, so that, that's been working out very well. The other parcel is the long thin one, um, with that contains rub lane. So the way the airport's property line is, it's a little bit weird. So it actually, when you look at this picture, it wraps all the way down um, to the south, and then it comes back up again on the right-hand side. So the part that you see that's yellow on the right-hand side is airport property, but the part that you see all the way to the left um, on the other side of rubs area, the R eighteen A dash twelve, that's also airport property. So you can see right underneath um, that long skinny one where it says the R eighteen A dash sixteen. Um, that's the, the airport's very large piece of property. Um, so well, they've all, they've been leasing that almost twenty years now. Um, and that's, both of these are compliance issues for us with FAA because it's non-aeronautical use of airport property. So one of the things, um, one of the most important things we need to do when we do this land release, it's very similar to the land release we did for the solar, except it's not for a lease, it's for the actual sale of the property. Um, the important thing that we need to do is update that Exhibit A. Though the Exhibit A, um, and I believe it's one of the attachments here, it's the official map that's updated with FAA and it's, they keep a copy of it down in FAA headquarters. And that shows the property line of the airport, and there's a table on the right-hand side of it, and that shows exactly where each piece of property came from, how the um, city came to have it, and how it was paid for, all those types of things. So what we need to do is update that Exhibit A. Um, and that's the only cost that's associated with this. So between rub and Flemish, we were able to get them to cover the costs for um, the survey and for the appraisal that was done to get the, the fair market value of the parcel. And um, because I can write the land release itself, the request that goes to FAA, um, we save a considerable amount of money by, by doing that in-house. Um, I reached out to one of the consulting firms for airports and they said it would, it would be anywhere between thirty and ninety thousand dollars if they were to do it from start to finish. Um, so we save, definitely get a good deal on this one. Um, so the, the expenditure that I am asking to make in association with this, again, um, that was up on the screen just a second ago, is from Stantec just to update that Exhibit A so that I can submit it with the land release request, and that's nineteen hundred dollars. So I'd like to propose that we take that out of the capital reserve fund, and then when we sell the property, the proceeds from that will go in to offset that expense.
Excellent, that makes sense, okay.
Excuse me, it looks like it's one thousand seven hundred and fifty, not nineteen hundred.
Got it. Um, it's a quick announcement. If, if you're on the phone, you're listening either by phone or computer, um, could you please make sure you're muted? Someone is watching the news or something like that and you can hear it clearly coming. Just make sure you're muted, please.
And if all, in all honesty, if they can't mute, they need to turn off their news and their other sound things.
I, I'm with you.
I'm echoing now.
Okay. Okay, so thank you. Sorry about that, Allison. Just wanted to make sure we're, we're concentrating on public.
It's a brave new world.
Yeah. Okay, so questions in the council on this?
So this is just step one. Once uh, we have FAA's release of the property to be sold and we have the Department of Defense's release from the National Emergency Use Provision, I'll come back to the council with the actual purchase and sale agreement for each one of the parcels. So this is just step one to, to relieve us from those grant assurances and that, um, the FAA obligations. And then we'll come back to do the official land sale as to other separate items.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Okay, so any questions in the council? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Um, we'll do the roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Tuttle? Council Tuttle? Maybe they're got a cake or something. Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Is it Hurley?
Yes, miss. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Council Hurley?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, Carrie's five to zero. Thank you.
Yes.
Ah, there you are. Hanslip's joining us.
I bet, I've been on all night. I think somehow I got muted.
Did you have the phone upside down, Consular?
No, no, it's right side up.
No, but I do, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that explains some things, okay. All right, well, welcome. Thanks for uh, chiming in there, appreciate it. Okay, Carrie's six to zero. Thank you very much, Allison, for your patience hanging in there with us tonight.
Thank you.
Next up is nineteen dash nine one six dot zero one, order to accept a proposal from SME and Drumland Environmental Consultants for a gas monitoring program at the Russian Street landfill prior to solar development. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
So moved.
Thank you. Samantha Buck? Samantha Buck, you with us?
Yes, I was muted. Uh, yes, uh, I think we skipped nine thirty-one, so after this, if we can go back to that.
Will we? All right, well, do this, uh, is that time-sensitive on this topic? Is it related to this? Okay, I'll go back.
All right. Going back to nine thirty-one?
Uh, no, go ahead because I'm on a different agenda. I'm looking at the one on the Larissa. So obviously the updated one has got something else, all right?
All right, let me just get this uh, document back to uh, sizing issues here. Here we go. Uh, so what's on the uh, table for this evening is um, SME and Drumland Environmental Consultants have been with the landfill since before its uh, closure on Russian Street. Uh, they have been with the city uh, to develop the closure. I continue with the city under the post monitoring activity associated with the closed landfill on Russian Street. Uh, we worked with them and the main Department of Environmental Protection approximately two weeks ago, we had a uh, Zoom conference, not different than this, um, to discuss with the main Department of Envir- Environmental Protection, those actions that would need to be taken by the city prior to the development of solar panels on the Russian Street landfill by Walden Green Energy. Uh, pursuant to that conversation, the scope was, was addressed, uh, and it's centered on the fact that there is a um, uh, I'm trying to get my size in here again. Is that there are some uh, identified uh, gas leaks at the landfill or what, what is um, assumed to be gas leaks, i.e. so in the cap area, there's some browned areas of grass uh, that aren't growing well. That's typically associated with the leaking of, of gas uh, at, at the landfills. So we've asked Drum- Drumland to put up a scope of works, which is here this evening. Uh, it's a contract for services of approximately of eighty-five hundred dollars uh, to be paid out of um, environmental services. Um, and the scope of work will um, look at, they'll take core samples in the impacted areas, so they'll address the cap in those areas. Uh, if there is um, a compromised area of the cap that will be repaired, reseeded and, and overloomed. Uh, and uh, and or if, if necessary, additional vents put in uh, to vent the gas so the leakage uh, stops occurring and the cap remains intact. So this is the only scope that was identified by, by the main Department of Environmental Protection that would need to be addressed prior to the start of construction. Uh, this needs to be addressed timely though, so that the work can be done because um, uh, Walden Green Energy has obtained their permits from the city for the project as far as the solar development is concerned for the Russian Street properties as well as the associated land mass uh, to the, to the east of the property. Uh, and they are now working on their full NERPA permits as far as the environmental permitting for the project. Uh, so the proposal this evening is asking for the authorization of the eighty-five hundred dollar quota services from Drumland uh, with said funds to be appropriated out of the environmental services uh, budget for this year.
Excellent, thank you for that. Any questions in the council? Okay, makes sense. All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, Carrie's six to zero. So you can imagine my confusion when I didn't see this topic on the agenda until I just opened the latest agenda, and I was wondering why all the high school folks were hanging on the call. Thought maybe it was still TV night, but now it makes all the sense in the world. Okay. Nineteen dash nine three one dot zero one, resolved to authorize street closure and traffic control measures on Main Street Route one oh nine for a Sanford High School motorized graduation procession on Wednesday, June tenth, two thousand twenty, starting at approximately six forty-five PM until approximately eight thirty PM from the Sanford High School SRTC entrance at one hundred Alumni Boulevard northbound, approximately four miles to Nissan Health in Springvale. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Is there someone from the school that would like to just introduce this topic?
I am here, Mr. Mayor. This is Matt Peterman, high school principal. How are you today?
Welcome. I'm doing well. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. I appreciate you all having me. Um, so we're looking at a Spartan graduate motorcade. Um, I know we say on here six forty-five approximately. Um, I know we say on here six forty-five approximately, we're looking to start at seven P M. And travel uh, northbound on Main Street up to Nassau Health uh, in Springvale. Nobody will be walking, uh, the graduates will be passengers in the vehicles. And um, we're figuring traveling at a speed between ten and fifteen miles an hour. Um, the chief did uh, a very good job of of figuring out uh, how long it would take for us, uh, we're looking at a motorcade of about three hundred cars if we have everyone participate. Um, that might not necessarily happen, um, depending upon who wants to stay for the the motorcade. So uh, we're looking at between seven and um, eight fifteen-ish, I think, is when the the chief figured the last car would probably arrive in Springvale. Um, he had recommended that we have six officers, however, um, we will have eight officers for graduation and the procession along with our student resource officer, um, Mike Gordon. So we have them from three to nine to make sure that we we have all the assets hopefully we need. Um, I know he was looking at having three patrol cars out front and two at the tail end of the motorcade.
Excellent, and and I just want to thank Principal Peterman for putting this together. I want to thank Superintendent Matt Nelson for supporting this idea and the school committee uh, for supporting it, obviously means a lot to the graduates and it means a lot to the community. It's obviously uh, not at all what they imagined, but it it's it's a pretty, it's a pretty good second option here. And I know that, you know, my graduates excited about it, so I want to personally thank the group uh, for all you've done to make this make this happen, so.
Thank you, you know, we were looking for a way to honor our twenty twenty graduates. Um, since we're essentially going to have to have a closed campus graduation um, in order to meet the uh, the state requirements uh, for groupings under fifty. So it's going to be essentially a drive-through uh, with families and students in cars. They will get out uh, when they cross the stage and they receive their diploma. But um, yeah, it's it's definitely different and we figured this would be a a great opportunity to get people out along Main Street socially distanced and out there to be able to support uh, our graduates this year.
Excellent. And I and I forgot to mention Chief Conley and Senior Manager Steve Buck, um, you know, it really took some coordination, obviously, uh, from the city side. So thank you for your efforts to make this happen. Um, questions in the council?
Mayor Cody.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, yeah, Council Hanselman?
Sorry, uh, just quickly, I just, for folks at home that maybe can't read this or aren't seeing, I just want to reiterate or or point out that um, it looks to me, if I'm understanding this correctly myself, that um, traffic only on one side of the street where the procession's happening is going to be um, stopped. So meaning there will be traffic going southeast on Main Street, so people might want to make sure they line up on the um, you know, the the northbound side of uh, Main Street to get their best view, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that was the recommendation uh, that the uh, Chief Conley had brought forward was that we just stop northbound, not the southeastbound.
So we'll just cheer from that side.
May I ask why? Why you can't shut down both sides?
Do we know, uh, Senior Manager Buck, why there was a inkling to to provide traffic on the opposite direction?
Uh, yes, uh, to allow the continued flow as as much as possible. So the officers are going to have a difficult time closing off the one lane, given the the uh, large number of intersections. I know Chief Conley is on the conference tonight, I can I can see his uh, computer device, but I know every time he unmutes, he's getting a significant echo, so. Um, anyway, so the, I know the the um, school, school department staff, um, Principal Peterman has worked extensively with the chief, the chief, um, I was discussing this with the chief just the other day. He's confident that the number of police officers that have been assigned to the duty uh, will to the best of their ability control the traffic, there's always some concerns when it gets to the lit intersections and such under that. Um, and there will be a significant delay and workaround for traffic in the northbound lane of of one oh nine. But um, if there's thirty minutes worth of inconvenience in order to have a good show of support for the graduates here in Sanford, I think that's a very minor inconvenience uh, in perspective of everything that's going on in the world today. So uh, I'm confident that the chief has a a well-laid out plan uh, to to aid the procession in in going northbound on one oh nine. And I'm I'm ready to follow his recommendation on this.
Do, do we know?
Great evening, yeah.
Do we know?
Hold on, hold on, Council, Council, Council Tull had the floor, then I'll get you out, okay, Council Tull?
Yeah, I just briefly, Mr. Mayor.
Council Tull, you had a question?
Uh, well, it's just a statement, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, that uh, this is my fiftieth anniversary graduating from Sanford High School. And uh, I just wish all the kids well, considering the circumstances uh, for your graduation.
Thank you for that, Council Hurley Hee?
Do you just, um, so the majority of our parades happen through like, um, they say Dairy Queen to Golden Park. Do you know what time you're approximately approximately going to be in that section? I'm just gonna, I'm probably gonna try to get my tenants to come out and cheer them on.
So, uh, the question is what time will you reach that point?
Downtown, the the bulk of where most people watch the parade, like downtown Sanford and stuff. And I know Springvale is going to be from seven forty to eight, eight fifteen, if they leave on time. So that puts them in downtown Sanford at what, seven twenty, seven thirty? What's the thought process?
I would think it would be before then, um, it, I'm I'm very hopeful that we can keep things on time. Um, and if we get out at seven, we did uh, we did a rolling uh, a rolling motorcade through uh, the town when our staff went around and and waved to our students. And um, you know, at a at a reasonable pace, I think we would probably be downtown seven fifteen.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. Excellent, any other questions or comments?
I I just, as a uh, father of a student, um, I would just say thank you very much for everybody that put in so much thought into this.
Excellent, so yeah, we we look forward to the evening and uh, the procession's going to be a really nice touch to to to, you know, sort of end the end the festivities. And uh, and again, if you're going to line the streets, uh, it'd be the northbound uh, lane. So if you line up accordingly, you know, landmark, you want to be on the fire station side of the main street. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, roll call vote, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Tull?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley Hee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, Carrie's six to zero, uh, best of luck with the festivities, um, Principal Peterman, and uh, we look forward to seeing you next week.
Thank you all.
All right. Okay, so. Now I need to find where we were, nineteen dash nine two zero dot zero one, order to accept the bid for the demolition and removal of the four oh eight Main Street building from Peter Pettit Landscaping. And the firm fixed a price amount of twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, do you have a motion?
Still moved, Mr. Mayor.
Are we going to go back to Seven Norman after this?
Did I miss another thing on the agenda?
I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor.
Something about Seven Norman Avenue, no?
Probably, I'm gonna.
It's not on my agenda that I'm looking at.
I neither.
Okay, so Director Houseill?
Yes, I'm here, uh, so we had uh, six uh, potential bidders showed up, show up to a pre-bid on May twentieth for this project. Um, the Land Bank Act asked to proceed uh, with this uh, this uh, bid for the demolition removal of forty-eight, four oh eight Main Street building in Springvale. Um, on last Wednesday, April twenty ninth, um, two bids were received. Uh, um, they are both with contractors that the city has worked with multiple times in the past. Uh, Peter Pettit Landscaping and our uh, Gilamet Brothers. Uh, the low bid, uh, they were within approximately two thousand dollars of each other. Uh, the low bid was to Peter Pettit Landscaping with uh, twelve thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Um, and um, I have no reservations about uh, awarding that bid to Peter Pettit. Uh, the Land Bank uh, Commission reviewed uh, the bid last Thursday. Uh, they also recommended the bid and um, uh, I'm I'm seeking the city council's approval, uh, this will be funding funded through the Land Bank Revolving Fund. Uh, this property was also found dangerous a number of months back. And as well, there was asbestos found in the building, the asbestos was uh, removed. And it's uh, prepped and ready for um, demolition and removal.
Excellent, any questions from the council on this one?
Oh.
Okay. So you know, we have a roll call vote, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stack, excuse me, Council Tull?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley Hee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, Carrie's six to zero. Um, Council Hurley Hee, did you have any questions about the Norman Street property while we're on this topic?
Uh, no, so I guess it was incorrectly marked in the PDF or something, so it's fine. I have, but um, is someone going to the auction tomorrow?
This current property, the Main Street property?
Yeah.
Uh, there is an auction on uh, June seventeenth.
Okay, I saw, I thought it said June third, so that's good, okay, thank you.
That that situation was discussed at Land Bank extensively and uh, our 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 recommendation was to push on as planned. Okay, so next up nineteen dash nine two nine dot zero one, order to delegate authority to the city manager to sign on behalf of the city council license applications for requests for extension of license on premise for opportunity, on premise for restaurants, making applications for outdoor seating during the COVID nineteen response period to August twelfth, two thousand twenty, do you have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Senior Manager Buck?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I put this on the the agenda at at the last moment. So in continuing to review, um, especially in light of the governor's orders to um, prevent restaurants from opening here in in three counties, one of which is York County, except for outdoor seating. The city council had already had the administration do the review and we made amendments to the design review process to expedite outdoor seating applications put forward by the restaurants, we've had a number of take advantage of those. Uh, last week, we found another uh, potential time delay was the extension of pre-existing liquor licenses for uh, restaurants, to extend those to the outdoor seating area. Uh, I put a request into the um, Bablo, the uh, liquor licensing uh, department for the state. And they indicated that I could, as city manager, sign uh, such extensions on behalf of the city council uh, if so authorized, so we're asking for that that authorization this evening. The two applications come forward already, Ella Mexicano and Third Lamb Diner. So this would be another identified uh, expedience as far as accommodating businesses and a request for such authorization through August twelfth. The reason for the August twelfth, that time's up with the current um, sunset of the ninety-one day provision for the emergency ordinance for the outdoor seating for restaurants as well.
Excellent, questions in the council on this?
Yeah, I had one, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, Third Lamb uh, Diner, uh, Stephen, where are they gonna uh, be outside, I know it's pretty tight there.
Mm-hmm.
And we've had a history of auto vehicle stuff.
Yeah, they have, they have lower seating set up already, they have a a a narrow area cordoned off as far as the sidewalk is concerned. So you can come from their front glass door that faces the uh, lower midtown mall parking lot, you can come up the side of the sidewalk. Uh, they have that cordoned off and then in there was a parking area that probably would have held, uh, I think, three to four vehicles. They have that sectioned off and they have a series of uh, picnic tables in there.
It's really cute, I think they did one of the best jobs, actually, they have about six tables in there, it's really cute.
Yeah, yes, it looked very nice.
All right, very good, any other questions? Well, I appreciate everybody's uh, interest in expediating, expediating these, you know, requests and 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 you know, doing what we can to support the local businesses, it's uh, I know it means a lot to them and uh, it means a lot to, I believe, the council to to show that we're we're doing everything we can to keep these people afloat, I know it's a difficult time, so. All right, so, you see nothing further, we'll have a roll call vote, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Tull?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley Hee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, Carrie's six to zero. Okay, so next up nineteen dash eight ninety-five dot zero one, resolved to establish a budget for traffic control for certain events starting in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and to establish a process whereby city sanctioned events are approved by the city council annually and other events must go through a specific approval process to be permitted, do you have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Senior Manager Buck?
So this is a list uh, which incorporates the Memorial Day Parade, the National Trails uh, Day Bike Fest, July third fireworks, Holidays Parade and Sanford-on-Tapp Brew Fest and Food Truck Festival. Uh, this listing of events, uh, what's being asked for is simply to authorize us when we go forward for the next fiscal year development, to budget for the anticipated traffic control for each of these events. The difficulty we've had over the years is, for example, Memorial Day Parade is 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 done by uh, the Veterans Group here, they put forward a budget um, for which this, the uh, city has has historically supported their budget request. Uh, traffic control has never been in that budget request, we've we've worked with them for several years uh, concurrently to get that request to be put in there, each year it's not, so it's it's just uh, it's not, it's not, the city's non-support of the event or the unwillingness to uh, uh, pay for the traffic control, it's just a matter of, there's no place currently in the municipal budget anywhere where this expense is is uh, actually booked for any of these events. So what we're asking for here is for the city council to recognize these events for which it would budget for the traffic control. Um, and uh, via that process, I would establish a line item. The uh, Parks and Recreation Department for that traffic control, which would then be uh, expensed against to reimburse the police department for the special duty time that's spent performing said traffic control.
Okay, questions on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Sorry, just I'm just sort of trying to understand, um, essentially these costs have existed, we just haven't had a budget line item, is that an accurate statement?
Correct, and and every, every year it comes up, the events come up and we, we all stare at each other, who's paying for this? You know, the police department will appropriately say, we have not budgeted for this, we, it's, you know, over time is stressed in that department year after year after year. We ask all other events to pay for the traffic control associated with our event. Uh, but this is the small list that the city either has primary control over or is uh, otherwise significantly involved in as far as the expense of their, of their budgets. Uh, the note, the distinction here is the city, uh, this motion is for the authorization to budget for the traffic control, it is not an authorization of sanctioning the event. So that's what has delayed this incoming forward is is the large discussion around insurances, what it means to sanction event versus simply paying for the traffic control. So this, by this motion, you are not sanctioning the events, in other words, we would have to be the owner and the control of the event in its entirety and so uh, put it onto our insurances.
Okay, I think that was the clarification we were looking for the last time we saw this. Okay, questions, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we roll call vote, Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Tull?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley Hee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, Carrie's six to zero, thank you. Nineteen dash nine two six dot zero one, order to authorize the reopening plans for Parks and Recreation Programming and Facilities, do you have a motion?
Still moved.
Still moved, second.
Excellent. Okay, Director Grady, you with us?
I am, can everybody hear me?
Very good, yep.
Yep.
So thank you guys, um,
So, thank you, guys. Um, I would if like, if possible, to kind of go through these one at a time. Hopefully, we've all had a chance to read them. Um, there are a few updates and changes um based on new information, based on a couple other things, so. Um, I just want to present as much information to you folks as possible. Um, coming from my end, I I kind of understood both sides of the argument. I see both sides of the argument. Um, so I'm just trying to present all the information I can, respect whatever decision you you as a council make um and and kind of go from there. So, if possible, I'd like to kind of breeze through these one at a time as as quickly as I could. Uh, I would like to start with summer camp. Uh, it's one of our biggest programs. We uh do have state guidelines issued. There is um an operations guide that I sent to you, but since last week's deadline, when I sent it to you, it's been adjusted and changed. Um, it it's now nineteen pages long. Uh, the state guidelines are are fairly strict. Um, what I keep telling people is if and when we run summer camp, it's it's not gonna look the same as what it's looked like. Um, you know, a a Zoom meeting I was on the other day, they said it's it's gonna be daycare for parents that need to go to work. You know, we're not gonna be playing basketball. We're not gonna roll the ball out and play dodgeball all the time. We're not gonna play tag. Uh, these guidelines are are fairly strict. Um, they encompass six-foot distancing at uh as much as possible. When there's no social distance distancing allowed, kids must wear masks, so we're asking parents that they have to bring masks in. Um, we are, uh, we're not gonna have field trips. We've cut our hours from seven thirty to five thirty to eight to five. Uh, there's gonna be a huge focus on hygiene and and kind of cleanliness. There's gonna be a lot of handwashing and sanitizing. Our staff will be disinfecting a lot of equipment, high-touch areas. Um, at drop-off, your your child camper's temp- temperature will be taken every morning. If you have a hundred point four or higher, you'll be asked to go home and you'll have to be fever-free for forty-eight hours before you return. Um, so it's a lot of work we've put in. I I do feel good that we have um a lot of returning directors to each of our camps. Um, you know, I am still a little nervous, but I do feel a little better with uh with those um returners coming back and and I do have confidence in them. Um, I do want to make you aware that it's kind of been a running theme across the board, York and Cumberland County. I tried to couldn't uh get some numbers here. Fifteen municipalities have canceled summer camp. Uh, seven are running camp and five are unsure. So so of those, twenty-seven municipalities in York and Cumberland County, those are those are the numbers, fifteen not running, seven running, and five still unsure at the moment. Um, I believe the YMCA is still planning on ru- on running. I haven't heard from Curtis Lake Church in town. Um, you know, what it comes down to really is, you know, the risk. Um, you know, the the main thing that the guidelines issued was keeping them in small, keeping campers in small groups as much as possible. Seven to nine campers max, so if a if somebody were to get infected, um, you know, the the goal being that you limit the amount of interaction and just that small group potentially um, you know, is is within contact of that camper. Um, so that that's our plan, you know, is is it worth it to have one person becoming affected? Or um do we have to start moving on and and, you know, we know there's a need. The a lot of parents are are looking for us to be up and running. Um, we're very low cost for a lot of families. Um, and and like I said, I do feel confident in in our staff, so. Um, I don't know if there's any questions. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the operation guidelines. If there's any specific questions into how camp will look, I can certainly do my best to answer those.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I do have a a question. Um, when you you ne- uh named up the numbers for the 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 different towns, um, did you find the larger municipalities like ours were, like the Bitterfords, were were still going to go forward? Or did you find it was the smaller municipalities with a lot lower numbers and easier to manage?
Um, it's sort of a mix. South Portland is running. I knew, I do know they are running. They're they're operating a much smaller. Um, us, uh, um, they're only going eight hours a day, um, where typically I believe they'd run nine or ten. Um, Saco is running. Um, Saco is is a bigger community. A lot of the towns around us are not running. Uh, Kennybunk, Wells, Lebanon, Berwick, uh, all the Berwicks, um, they've shut down. I believe Portland's still waiting. I don't know if they've made their call yet. Um, so yeah, it's it's sort of a mix.
And I just have one other question about the camps is is, do you feel that it's gonna put the city in a situation because of the all this extra work and and staff and and low numbers, a a deficit running the camp?
Um, so we're we're partially subsidized anyways um for our camps, so our camps, you know, they're not typical. Um, in regards, I've been at other municipalities where, you know, it costs a, you know, a thousand dollars to go to a eight or nine-week camp. Ours is is not that cost. Um, you know, they they look at their camps as big moneymakers, where ours ours is partially subsidized, so we're we're not in that boat.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions specifically relating to camp?
Uh, if I could just offer out, um, so participate in the York County uh managers' group sessions, you know, we we've had these for a number of weeks now. It's all been centered around who's doing what on COVID response and such under that. I think some of the the communities that uh Director Grady had referenced, those communities such as Wells that swells from eight thousand people to forty thousand in the summer, uh, their their concern is what's going to happen with that out-of-state surgeons comes in, out of Massachusetts and Connecticut and other areas on their facilities and can they segregate those and such under that. So they're, they are in a different situation than what Sanford is as far as who's here in the summertime and the swell of summer population versus uh not having that same swell.
And and I will piggyback on that, that we're not gonna allow out-of-towners into our camp. Um, we're we're strictly remaining in our in our school district, so Sanford, Springville, Acton would be the only communities allowed in.
Okay, any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
Yes, uh, just really briefly, uh, you know, I I think that uh Alan made a really good point that um this shouldn't be thought of as the traditional, you know, rec program, where kiddos are really kind of going to to celebrate summer vacation, but uh a real source and and filling frankly a a significant need in our community for some childcare as we have many people that are beginning to go back to work and and are struggling with that um with that balance of needing childcare. So I, from that perspective, I really appreciate all the efforts going in to um get our our program back up and running, so thank you.
Okay, so I think you can push on, Alan.
Okay, so the next one I'd like to touch base is the Springville Rec area. Um, so the Springville Rec area has two pavilions. It's very popular in the summer. Um, because we don't have field trips right now for summer camp, um, w- we thought during the weekdays, we'd like to shut it down just to our campers and we would hold, you know, we have six, uh, five or six camps and they would just hold camp there one day a week. Um, pick-up, drop-off there. We close the gates. I have a um, you know, waterfront director that can eh that can close the gate. I would sign it during the week and just say from Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, this facility is closed to the general public. Keep our summer campers there. Keep our numbers low. Um, we will have lifeguards on duty during that time as well. Um, and kind of al- al- allow that open um just for our campers during the week. On the weekends, uh, our thought was not allowing pavilion rentals. Typically, those are very popular. Um, but I mean, one of those pavilions can hold, I think, seventy-four people. Um, so instantly, you're over the the fifty-person max for gatherings. Um, so our thought was leave it open to the general public, sort of treat it like a a beach is right now, where um, it's open and and, you know, if you leave it to the public to to do their best to um socially distance and we we go back to um telling the police to kind of do drive-bys on weekends as best as possible.
So, just so I understand what the request is here, so the is there anything to prevent someone that just wants to go for a swim at the rec during the week from doing that?
So, right now it's closed. Our gate's up. That being said, and we have signs, but I mean, people could still walk down and people and we just had a fire out there the other week. Um, so people can still access it right now. My goal was, again, Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, just allow it for summer campers. That, you know, the last thing we want is the general public mixing with our summer campers um with the potential for, you know, touch, uh, not touching them, but being in close contact and proximity.
Understood, okay. Questions about that point?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I do have one. Um, and and it's just out of, um, is i- i- is there really any other place for residents to enjoy, you know, some relief from the heat in the summer? Um, you know, for swimming and stuff. I I I don't mean to sound angry on this. I just, I I just don't know. It's one of the only spots that I know.
Yeah, I mean, people do get to the trails and go to Indians Last Leap and and that's all on their own. This is the only sort of public facility. It's not guarded on the weekends. We don't have lifeguards on the weekends. Um, it's just sort of an open swim at your own risk. I know people, um, you know, we did have a drowning a few years ago where a person had walked down um by the kind of green space at Holdsworth Park and walked all the way down and started swimming down that way, so. Um, there's signage is up there that that, you know, say no swimming, but um, it's kind of on on their own.
I I just, my only concern would be is that um it it would become a situation where people will forcibly just help themselves to it, so I just don't know if it's a abbreviated schedule, maybe give it to your campers two or three days a week and allow the public to use it the other ones. I just, I think if we're gonna run into problems with that when it gets really hot in the summer and people don't have that relief, a lot of people walk there.
Yeah, um, the only issue is, you know, I I I try not to double up my camps as much as possible. Um, you know, then we're putting two or three um groups of camps there where, you know, there's there's up over, I'm gonna put forty-three campers in each camp, so we're up to eighty-six kids and uh fourteen staff, including our lifeguards. You know, and granted, I I think we could break that down into two facilities where you have the lower swim areas, one facility, and that could be fifty. And then the upper area um could be considered as another fifty. Um, so so we we might be able to
I think what the council is, Alan, I I think what the cons- council is getting to though, it's it's not so much the camper sort of concern. It's if if I, as a taxpayer, wanna go jump in the in the lake or the river and it's ninety-five degrees out, I can't do that from, you know, middle of the day, basically. That that I think that's the concern. I think I know that we're gonna be hearing about this.
Yep, yeah, I get it. I was just saying, if if I have to, um, say I allow Fridays open to the general public, now I have to double up my summer camps um at a couple different days.
Yeah, no, I get it. I get it. Um.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Council Tuttle?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think it's, uh, Alan's important, maybe you keep it uh the council abreast as we move forward, but I think that we have to err on the side of caution, particularly when it comes to young people. This is something new that we've never had to deal with. But I I just hope that we do it in the right way, as cautiously as possible. I know some people might be upset that they can't use it, but I think under the circumstances it's uh, you might put other people's life on the line, and I think we have to accept that being good citizens.
And the only other thing is, you know, we don't know numbers yet. I might have smaller camps. I might not fill. Um, if that's the case, I can certainly open it back up. I can I can look at doubling up one or two of my camps and and try and leave a Monday or a Friday open to the general public as well.
I I I guess I'll say this on this topic. I mean, if it if it becomes a major headache for everybody, we we may have to revisit it. I don't know what that does to your, you know, certainty of 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 camp, but you know, where there is limited things to do anyway now.
Sure.
To to strike the rec area from the thing of, you know, the list of things to do Monday through Friday, eight to five, it is not gonna be well received by some. So, you know, I I think we need to watch this situation.
And I can certainly report back once we open summer camp registration and see if that's a viable option is opening up, you know, one of those days.
Okay, push on.
So, the next one is uh Gold Park Gazebo Picnic Pavilion. So if we're shutting down the pavilion rentals at Springville Rec area, um, there's gonna probably be a good chunk of people asking for places to hold showers and birthday parties. Um, and and I think we can open up the gazebo and the picnic pavilion. Um, there are large gathering uh recommendations made by the state, so we can certainly put that on our online registration with the link saying, have you read these and do you understand the the guidelines set forth by the state? Um, so people know that when they make their reservation. Um, I just think a lot of people will be asking for facilities um to rent during that, uh, like I said, because the pavilions at Springville Rec area are are rented every weekend, so. Um, granted, there's a playground and a beach area. It's a, it's a, it's a little bit nicer. Um, but I I I think if we open those up to to gatherings, we'll still be able to um rent rent those facilities and I can certainly touch base with police every week and let them know what's going on for rentals.
Okay, any questions from the council on that one?
Nope.
All right, push on.
So, uh, before I get to playgrounds, real quick, I have been getting requests from other fac- um, on other facilities, specifically baseball parks, Good Old Park and Blue and Field. Um, I did wanna update you. You can see that Little League. Um, if you scroll down next to the main CDC, it says yes on June one. Um, so they did allow that, but but um going back and looking over that, they do say they strongly discourage um scrimmages and 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 games um within the community and travel teams. Um, so the the word is strongly discouraged. My thought right now for those travel groups is not allowing that and maybe revisiting July one. I've been, I just got another email today from a private club, um, but I just wanna let everybody know that's, I think that's my plan of attack.
Okay, yeah, great. Any questions around that?
So you say, is that Little League or just the travel teams?
That's the travel groups.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, next up, playgrounds. This has been a tough one, going back and forth and um you you know, I I I can see the argument where at some point it's, you know, if if a parent wants to do it, do we just put that responsibility on responsibility on them and allow them to? Um, I will tell you, you know, the National CDC says no, Maine says avoid use if possible. For summer camps, they say if you're gonna use them, disinfect clean after every use, so I have my directors of each camp. You know, they're gonna be spraying down after a small group use every single time. We're gonna, you know, buy a bunch of materials and 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 supplies for them to clean in between usage. Um, lastly, N R P A is the National Rec and Park Association, so they've been doing these surveys weekly. Um, so you can see that just fifteen percent of the playgrounds that they've surveyed are open. It is now up to twenty-one percent as of May twenty-ninth, so that's slowly being out there. Um, communities are slowly starting to allow them. I I worry a little bit if we open these up. Um, we we could be con- you know, other communities are gonna start coming here and using the playgrounds as well, so. This has been a tough one because, you know, there's newer information coming out that, you know, the the virus doesn't live on on surfaces and and that surfaces that are, you know, under the sun a lot, you know, may not, you know, be as fa- as affected, so. I I just, I think they're already being used despite our signage. If we open them up and we can throw, you know, use at your own risk signs up, um, i- it's gonna kind of be a free-for-all. I just don't envision any way keeping six-foot distances from the ma- I mean, if you go by Benton Playground any warm day, that place is packed.
So, wha- what is what is your suggestion? Just make sure I'm clear.
Yep, so I would I would suggest keeping the playground shut until at least July one, maybe revisit in a couple weeks.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
So, I mean, are you looking, I mean, are you looking for head nods on each topic, or I mean, or?
Bas- basically, yes.
Okay, is is anybody super concerned about keeping the park, the playground equipment closed currently?
I I'll just say, Tom, I think it's a good idea for a little bit longer. The science is moving pretty quickly on this uh on COVID. And so we might have better information bu- by July first, that maybe it doesn't live on surfaces and we can feel more confident reopening it.
Ag- agreed, so why don't we take another look at that thing, um, that topic in in the end of June, you know, approaching of July?
Perfect. Basketball courts is another tough one. Um, I recommend keeping them closed just because the sport of basketball is so physical. You're gonna be having a lot of contact. You're gonna be speaking closely to to other players. Um, they they are up to thirty-nine percent open based on N R P A. Um, we keep them closed as of now. A lot of municipalities I've talked to have them still closed. I mean, Old Orchard Beach took their rims off their outdoor courts. Um, you know, I don't think we need to go there, but I know they're being used as is despite signage. Um, but again, with that sport, I I just, there's just no way to socially distance.
Yeah, I agree. I I think it, you know, I certainly don't wanna endorse it, and I think that the current situation of just being closed, you know, whether it being used or not, but our position is that they're closed, I think is is the right way to go.
I think the, the only problem I have with this is that not the, so the basketball courts in Springville and downtown Sanford are, uh, don't have fencing around them. Am I, am I correct?
The Springville Playground does not. There's a fence around Springville Playground.
But you locked, you locked it up. Have you locked up the basketball courts in Springville?
Uh, I'd have to double check with Brian. I think that all the, uh, I think you can get in on the other side, though.
Yeah, see, what I'm saying is, my, my main issue with this one is that the Carpenter Park, you, you actually locked them up.
Yeah.
And so I, I, I just see a little bit of unfairness from one section of town to another. Because even though you've put up signage, you didn't have the ability to lock it up, but Carpenter Park, you were locked it up.
Yeah.
And so it seems, it seems a bit unfair. Uh, it's not quite as equitable that way. And that's the main problem I have with the basketball courts. It's, you know, if, if, if signage is up at the other ones and you're like, okay, whatever happens, happens. The signage is up. I would think the same thing should happen at the other basketball courts. Signage goes up, but it's not locked.
I agree a hundred percent.
But we have the ability to lock Carpenter. We don't have the ability to lock Benton.
Yeah, therefore you have inequity within the community.
Right, exactly. It's not, it's not equitable.
Wha- what are you proposing, counselor?
Just leave it unlocked.
Grow up signs recommending that people do not play basketball or engage in, um, contact sports and leave it unlocked. But, you know, that's my, that's my thought. I've, I've had a couple people mention to me, it seems unfair that only Carpenter got locked up.
And the, the other thing to Laura's point is, uh, Ca- Carpenter also allows pickleball, which is allowed, uh, activity right now. And those picko- like pickleball players aren't allowed to get on there and play.
Maybe, maybe it's the one park you should be maybe pulling down the basketball net might be the wiser thing to do because that hard surface as part of the park, kids do a lot of other things there too. You know, they'll, they'll, they'll zoom around on their skateboard. You know, they have at least a hard surface to do that, that's safe.
Yep.
Whereas, you know, the, the other parks, the other parks are more open for those activities on hard surfaces. And Carpenter, you just threw a lock on it. It's with the number of children in that area, it just seems really unfair.
No, that's, I mean, we can, we can certainly put signage up there and leave it unlocked. Um, so moving on, skate park. Um, this was a real struggle for me. I've been going back and forth with this 'cause skating by nature, I feel like it, it, you know, can be socially distanced. I did recommend keeping it closed. I'm just, I just know how popular our skate park is and I envision, you know, there's people already there using it. If we, if we officially say it's open, um, I could just see fifty, sixty kids down there, all standing close together, standing on top of ramps, high-fiving. You know, again, and I struggle with this 'cause at some point, you know, is it, is it on a parent to say, all right, I, you know, you, you as a child, you know, as a thirteen, fourteen-year-old, you stay distant and do your best, um, because it's a great facility. So Anne and I had a good conversation back and forth with this and, and it's just, it's, it's tough for me. Um, I did recommend keeping it closed, but I'm kinda all ears on this one.
Can I, uh, can I chime in as a dad of a, uh, BMXer and scooter guy? Is, I, I would, I would prefer you to leave it open because I, I'm kinda, one of the things these kids are kinda sick of is always feeling like they're doing something they're not supposed to be doing. You know, that's going outside and playing with their friends, you know, doing that. And this is one activity that you can socially distance. You have your own equipment. And it's a place that you could actually, like, teach them to do it the right way and actually have them use it legally without fe- making them feel like they're always doing something kinda looking over their shoulder because it's not allowed. That's just my opinion as a dad.
And I can certainly, we can certainly throw a sign up on, you know, maintain socially distancing. CDC, I'm sure has something we can print off and post.
And if I, if I might add to that, you know, in full disclosure, I have a skateboarder, so I'm, I'm biased on this topic and but I did reach out to several other skate parks, um, and, and actually some of my contacts in my other, um, city that was a home to me. And, and they're, they're actually having some success in putting the, um, giving the youth an opportunity to, to create some social distancing standards. They've, in some of the parks, they've had kiddos, um, along with adult supervisor, actually create so- social distancing marks on the top of, um, some of the, uh, I'm drawing a blank, I'm sorry, like at the top of a ramp, for example, or actually create visual cues as to where you would stand to create social distancing or how many, um, youths would be allowed on top of that ramp to allow for that distancing. So there are parks that are doing it and youths are, um, i- it seems from some of the feedback I'm getting, respecting that because they're so you know, needing to get out and, and participate in that activity. So that's another thought and, and I would certainly volunteer to be part of that effort if, if that were to move forward.
Sounds like a project for Mike Bagley, who's been really helpful up there, so I can certainly do that.
I would, maybe we should take the skate parks and say, you know, we'd like you to figure out a way to open them with those thoughts in mind and as opposed to coming up with a plan to not open them. Or to just leave it vague.
Certainly. I can work with Mike Bagley, who's there and been helpful and on our parks crew to get signage, um, up as well. The other one was, uh, tennis courts. I just felt a little bit more comfortable with this. This is now on the NRPA site, up to seventy-five percent open based on May twenty-ninth. The USTA, the United States Tennis Association, does have guidelines and recommendations, so I felt much more comfortable with this. This is a sport, they, they do recommend playing singles, uh, using more tennis balls, uh, no high-fiving, things like that. So we could certainly post those guidelines and start opening up Gold Park tennis courts. I, I feel pretty comfortable with those. Okay?
How about face mask?
Nope, you're actually not recommended to play a sport with a face mask.
I would say most outside activities, as long as you keep proper distance, they, they're not as concerned about face masks outside. Am I right?
Correct. Um, trails continue to keep open. I think the trails have seen more action this past few months than they have the last few years. Um, so I'd love to keep those open and keep pushing folks onto our trails. The next one is Little League, and I believe we probably had some folks from Little League on this call as well. Um, I do wanna just give a quick update on, on, on my end. Um, like I said, the, the main CDC does, does say in their writing, um, strongly discourage, uh, scrimmages with, within communities and travel team play. So basically no games. They're encouraging more skills and drills and, and, um, you know, small numbers and forcing six-foot distancing, things like that. Only sixteen percent of leagues are running right now. That being said, Little League, um, has worked hard. They did come up with a, with a safety plan in place. They have some, some, um, basically you're allowed fifty people outside of a field and fifty people inside of the field. They have some sanitizing things going on. You know, my concern is the state has strongly discouraged it. I, I do have a, 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 a little bit of, um, a struggle with how, how it's gonna be enforced. I mean, our parks crew, myself, we're not gonna be at Little League games. It's, it's asking a lot of volunteers to say, you know, you're only allowed fifty people to watch the game. You know, wanna make sure, you know, how, how they're gonna force that. So I don't know if Kevin wants to speak to that real quick.
Yes, absolutely, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Kevin Doe, President of Sanford Little League. No, we, we definitely know that there's some, uh, labor of love to make this go down for the kids. We think it's gonna bring in some normality, uh, kinda like, uh, council, Lettig was talking about, uh, you know, kids really trying to find some structure in an organization. Uh, we are a very strong organization, uh, strong board. Uh, we stuck with this, um, definitely used all our resources from the health field to, um, re- you know, to emergency planners that are on our board, uh, each of the talents brought in. To note, this year, we did do a restructure of our program, um, offered some discounts for volunteering. That dis- that in itself has generated us over five hundred hours of volunteering time that our membership has, uh, committed to. We're typically three hundred and fifty to three hundred and sixty-two, uh, players. Uh, we're down to about a hundred and sixty-four. Um, so what we looked at that is reducing that down to small teams and understanding that we're only gonna spend an hour and a half in the field max. Um, for the month of June, we'd look at the fifty-person host of site locations. We consistently put them at the same field locations, make sure that we can standardize and align um, and maximize our ability to man and control. Uh, once we get into phase three, we'll do another reevaluation. We took our plan. Uh, we put it through, uh, complete gap analysis and looked at all the, looked at the associated risks and said, hey, do we, are we meeting the reopening guidelines of Maine, uh, the Maine CDC and what there were to offer? Uh, that gap analysis has proven we have, we meet and or exceed those state requirements. Um, so we'll be looking at the first two weeks, keeping our groups down. Uh, so be the last, what, uh, three weeks of June here. Uh, we practice for two weeks and that'll keep the numbers down. Last week will be games. Um, that'll put us into the timeframe where we're looking at phase three, uh, period. Again, like I said, we'll look at those, um, reopening requirements. Uh, if we've, if there is a delay in that, we will keep the same teams playing each other. Uh, that will keep that, that will keep that host, um, together in that fifty limitation. Um, and we will, we are not bringing in any other folks from any other towns, so we'll stay in, we'll stay inside. Our scrimmage and or games, uh, we're just gonna call them games, uh, more like Sandlot than actual scrimmaging where you produce a round robin or some type of, uh, tournament table. So we believe, we believe that our structured program doesn't fall into that moving around in constant, uh, you know, touch, cross-contamination. Um, and we are sanitizing with our dugouts to be turned into sanitation stations. Um, equipment will be sanitized and, uh, facilities will be sanitized by our volunteers before, during, and after. And the, and the ball in itself, after each batter is sanitized by an umpire. We will issue LPPE and provide, um, all the necessities for meeting CDC guidelines and disinfecting.
Excellent. Thank you for that overview. Um, questions as it relates to the Little League program?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Uh, Kevin, one thing that just caught my eye with the, um, safety plan, which is extensive and, and clearly has a lot of time and effort put into and is, is impressive. Um, one of my concerns had been the, the dugout, so you explained well how that will be a, a sanitation or safety kind of area, but it looks like to me you'll need a lot of, um, volunteers. Do you feel like in Sanford, the Little League has enough, um, volunteer support to, you know, man these stations and help, um, manage, um, your, your, um, spectators and so on? Do you feel like you have a good handle on that?
Absolutely. And like I, I mentioned, I did a restructure of the program this year, um, and offered, and the folks that have stayed are very willing folks and they're very dedicated to sport. We, like I said, we have over five hundred hours of committed volunteering time that people have received, uh, discounts for their membership for the year. So that was how we offered that to them and, and will hold true to that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to, to mention too is, um, to, uh, Councilor Hanselman, uh, maybe concern or what, uh, you brought up is, um, I, I know from talking to, to Kevin is, is not only is, is the board i- i- committed to this, but um, the parents of these, of these, um, players are very committed. They wanna see this work and they understand the, the volatility of everything. So they, they're, they're under good understanding and, and about the numbers and, 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 you know, making all of that work together. So I just wanna, you know, kinda congratulate Kevin for the hard work, 'cause it, it, it probably was not easy doing this and um, and his group of parents for the dedication to, to get these kids back to some normal. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, if there's nothing further, we appreciate the overview. And again, best of luck with the season and, uh, you know, keep us posted. We'll obviously be watching closely as far as how, you know, how this progresses and take it from there. Okay, Alan, anything else as far as the, uh, the plan? Nope, that's all set on my end. That concludes it. Okay. All right, so, you know, we, we got a overview of the, the structural, you know, perspective and, and elements of, of the program for Paxton Rec. Did we? Any specific concerns that weren't brought up during the conversation?
Oh, can I? Can I ask the city manager a question?
Yep.
Um, so, so as far as like, so playgrounds, we're gonna post them, they're gonna be marked out. If someone decides to use them, is it, is, is there a city resource that is enforcing or are we, i- is it kinda a, a use at your own risk at that point? Ho- how do, what goes on there? Just in case people see it happening. Uh, what, what, what is the process?
Yeah, well, w- we, we know it's going to happen. So it's back to the community policing of, um, engage, advise, and disperse, uh, uh, on an as-need basis. So um, it, it all depends. As far as the playgrounds, is a singular topic. Just how stringent you wanna get as far as the enforcement is concerned. Um, I think if they're appropriately signed as far as their non-use because of the risk and that risk is identified, yeah, I, I guess, yeah. It's back to the police department has been doing that. Uh, we know that because they have been, uh, engaging, uh, advising and dispersing, that there's been criticism of that in itself. So uh, if you want something different than that, I guess we, we, we need to make that known as far as the city council is concerned.
So the reason I brought it up, because I, I know we're gonna run into that if they're kicking kids off basketball courts or out of playgrounds. We're gonna hear the negative too. So I just wanted to make sure it was on the plate.
I, I don't think there's any interest in breaking from the current, um, policy that we have in place, image books. So I, I think we push on. I think more or less the question was, you know, would, would that change? And I think the, the current policing, from my perspective anyway, has been adequate and, and meeting the needs of the community. Okay. Anything further as it relates to the parks presentation this evening? Okay. A roll call vote, Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Tuttle?
Yes, with caution, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Lanigan?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. And again, um, sort of carry six to zero, but I'd say, um, Director Grady, we, we're gonna have to review this, you know, every couple weeks or so, maybe at property subcommittee and, and particularly the items that we taught, you know, talked about specifically. You know, maybe you can give us a report at the subcommittee in the next couple weeks. Absolutely. Excellent. Okay. All right. Lastly, tonight nineteen-nine-two-one-zero-one, order to approve a municipal grant application. Sanford ATV Club make improvements to Sanford Trails as detailed in the application. Bit of a motion?
Tell a move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. So I just, before we dive into this topic, uh, there was a lot of, I guess, emotion around this at the property subcommittee. The agenda item tonight is the acceptance of the grant to approve a municipal grant application. That's it. It's not a discussion on the, you know, um, future or, or conditional use or things of that nature of the ATV Club on the trails. Um, this is specifically related to this grant application. So anything other than that, I'm gonna steer it back towards the application of the grant. You know, i- if there's a further discussion that needs to occur, we will have that discussion, but it's not tonight. So with that, Director Grady, do you wanna offer us an overview?
Yeah, um, you have all the information right there. Uh, basically, they're, uh, applying for about fifty thousand dollars. Seventy percent reimbursed by the state, um, a bunch of different projects listed below from bridge and sign materials for all trails, um, to some, uh, sixty yards of rock tailing over off Emery Mills Road, some eco-friendly premier ground grading. A beaver deceiver over at Deering Pond, that rail trail has been kind of, um, beavers are doing some damage to it. Um, grade and resurface an area, SSYA, um, and Pleasant Street Trail. Um, repair twelve hundred and fifty feet of railroad trail, uh, the Beaver Dam area. Gravel trail compaction there, and then an east section of the trail by Shaw's Ridge Road. So, um, again, again, this is all work done by the ATV, um, club. They applied for the grant last year and got it. And, and did some good work last year. I anticipate the same, uh, the same this year.
Excellent. Questions in the council? Okay. Um, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Tuttle?
Yes.
Councilor Lanigan?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Attorney Mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, carry six to zero. Excellent. Thank you.
I'm also a yes, carry six to zero. Excellent. Thank you for your patience tonight, Director Grady, and uh we'll see you soon. Thank you all. Okay, lastly, we have um council member comments. Councilor Hanselman?
Oh, sorry about that. Uh, uh, yes. Uh one quick thing, um WSSR TV and Sarah Snell, uh their, their staff person has been doing just an amazing job. Um doing, you know, not only school-based videos and uh as well as things like the solar project and working really, really hard during these COVID nineteen days of, of getting um some videos out to the community. So I just want to make a, a shout out to WSSR TV and, and some thanks there. And then I, I honestly don't personally have the, the words to express um kind of a myriad of emotions and thoughts that have gone through my mind in uh recent days. But you, you know, I've just want to put out there that kindness, uh you know, respectful disagreement um and the ability to recognize that we're all people that um all have equal value, you know, is just something really important. And, and now more than ever, and if we can do that in our small way, in our community, with our neighbors, with our, you know, people that we communicate with and interact with all the time, I, I think that we can make change in our own community just in that really simple way. So um just throwing that, that out there and I think that's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Consular Tuttle?
Yeah, briefly, Mr. Mayor, I've, I've got a few things. I, I've noticed in, an increase in speeding up Hospital Hill. Heading east over the last few weeks between the hours of four and six P M. And uh as, as usual, motorcycle noise on the weekend. And we have particularly have an individual in a blue motorcycle, Holly Davidson. And I think purposely has a uh exhaust that doesn't meet on noise ordinance. So I'll be communicating with Chief Connolly about this. I've also received emails. Uh I know the Councilor Lanigan and, and Hanselman had mentioned about speeding. Uh and sharing that with the chief on what seems to be working around the country. And finally, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to thank Deputy Mayor Hanslip for putting in the congrats from my wife Anne. So it was greatly appreciated and I think she may be the longest uh time employee in Sanford's history. I'm presently checking with Paul Ogibeltat. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um Councilor Lanigan?
I would just like to say uh congratulations to the class of twenty twenty. Couple of speed bumps this year, but you guys are on your way to greatness. I know it. I know a lot of you guys. And I can't wait to see what you do uh with this great future that you have ahead of you.
Excellent. Thank you. And Consular Hurley?
Hi, um just a couple of things. Um it would be nice if there was a better agenda link uh that brings people right into our Zoom meetings on the calendar. I noticed today that the calendar only had the site plan meeting and it does not have the city council meeting. Um I know people have had trouble finding a good link into our meetings. Um I did the flag pickup today with the veterans. I think next year, I think I might focus more on finding volunteers for the pickup because there were only six of us. Um and most of, uh, uh, most of them were a little on, you know, the older side. Um and I just, as far as what's going on in the, in the country, I think it's, I think people just remember, have to remember that it's easy to get caught up in a negative reaction to a positive message. So remember, if you're going to any of these protests, don't get caught in the people who are choosing to be negative. Because crowd mentality and, and that whole wave can very quickly uh overcome you. And I think it's, we as individuals need to make sure that we maintain the positive message of change uh that everybody across the country is looking for. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Deputy Mayor Hanslip, excuse me.
Um two things. First of all, um I would like to be recorded as a yes on all the votes this evening. There was a few votes that you apparently didn't hear me, but I would like to be recorded as a yes on all those votes. And secondly, I would just ask people to recognize that what actually separates us is a very small percentage of who we are. As people. The, it, it is our humanity that, that we share in common. And binds us together. And I think that's important for people to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh yeah, lastly tonight, I wanted to express my congratulations to uh Ms. Tuttle for her retirement and years of service. So thank you, Anne, for your many years uh contributing to the success of the community. Uh do you want to, you know, say congratulations to the class of twenty twenty? And um, you know, we'll, we'll try to put on a good show for you next week and I hope that people come out and, you know, so you keep the safe distance, distancing, but you know, go ahead and line Main Street and uh say congrats to these kids. They've worked hard and then, and it's they're obviously, you know, difficult circumstances and, but hey, it's a Wednesday night, I'll give you something to do. There's not much else going on. So uh come on out and uh, you know, say hello and congrats to the, to the graduates. And again, I wanted to reiterate, um you know, if, if you're going to participate in any demonstrations or, you know, in, any uh things this weekend, just, just try to be respectful, understand that. Um you know, you could express concern, you can express frustration, but do it peacefully and uh be cognizant that there's there's young people uh that, that also feel strongly about uh these situations and, and are passionate about getting their voices heard. But, you know, look to adults um for guidance on how to behave and how to express those concerns. So, you know, just, just be cognizant that there's, there's, there's people out there that um you know, are looking towards us as adults on how we behave. And uh it's, it's meaningful to, you know, do the right thing, express your concerns uh in an effective manner. And uh, and then the only way to do that is in a peaceful manner. So um and that's it. I, you know, it was a long evening. Uh what, what, what struck me though is we, we have a lot of really positive things. While, while we're sort of dealing with, you know, the, the issues on a national level, locally here. Uh there's a lot of projects that are coming to fruition. And, you know, the marketing campaign that, that we're about to roll out, um I, I think is going to help sell some of those, some of those things we've been working on for a very long time. And when you see the video in real time and you see some of the beautiful ads and the imagery that, that, that Beats and Jennifer Camilli pulled together, uh I think it's going to be a really proud moment for the community. And you see your first commercial on TV or social media, it's going to feel pretty good, I believe. So um, you know, hang in there. I think we're about to, to launch this thing in earnest and I'm looking forward to seeing the results.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Tuttle?
Yes.
I had one more, I forgot.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to thank uh Consular Hurley for the work that she did on organizing the Memorial Day. Uh for veterans, being a veteran myself, Maura, I was really thankful you did that and I appreciate it.
Thank you for that and I agree.
Thank you, thank you, John, but it was definitely Anne and I. Uh she did one part and I did the easy part.
Well, Anne, thank you too.
Yes, I thank you to both and um I owe a personal thank you to Anne and she knows why. So um. Okay, so future agenda items, anything this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I have two if I could.
Okay.
So one is uh for public safety, um just recently, one of my uh, my lacrosse players and a friend of my son was uh run over by a car in the Pioneer Street area. And uh I've had some concern over there um over the past couple of months about the parking and the no parking zones, the junk out onto the sidewalks. What's happening is there's a lot of stuff pushing people out into the street and with the cars parked there, it creates a narrow passage. So I just didn't know if public safety could look at that. If there's any members that need any like uh pictures or backup. Um I, I definitely have some, some stuff I could email you if you just want to email me. Um but I didn't know if you could bring that up. Um and then um city manager Buck mentioned that he's part of this York County managers thing. Um recently, um some restaurant owners in York County got together and I just didn't know if maybe in property we could um see maybe what the, the feeling was from those managers about the restaurants.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again. You, you, you echoed like crazy there.
Oh, sorry. So, so the, I just wanted to see what the feeling was of the others, other managers um of what, what's happening with the restaurants. Um there, there's some sort of band together to actually open by June fifteenth. So I just wanted just to get an update from uh the city manager and what other cities are doing to deal with that.
Okay. Any other future gen items? Okay, I, I know I just had one. I brought this up earlier um in, in various subcommittees and I, I believe here. But uh the, the Good Old Mansion and the surrounding land associated with that, that home. You know, it's, it's deteriorating. There, there's homeless folks currently living uh and adjacent to the library. I, I believe on the Good Old Mansion side of the fence, um there's debris, there's the dead trees. There, it just, there's a lot going on there that isn't good. Um so if we can continue, I know that uh Director Housefield was looking into it. Uh but again, I, I think it's with all the positives we have going on, particularly in the downtown and renewed interest in the downtown. That, that's going to be a, a topic that we're going to have to deal with at some point. So whether it's Land Bank Authority um taking action, um we, we, we have to ask nicely and if that doesn't work, we need to take some action. So, any other things other than that? Okay, well, thank you everyone. Long evening, but I appreciate everybody hanging in there and uh we will talk to you in a couple of weeks. So with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Good night.
Good night.
Night.